Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 13th, 2024 regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present this evening. So before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I'd like to invite up City Manager Jay Burney for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Again, for the record, Jay Burney, City Manager. As council knows, we have been on the hunt in the search for a new state lobbyist. And Susan Grisham and I have been interviewing candidates over the first part of the summer. And as we were seeking candidates for those interviews, one name popped up from several different sources as, boy, you really need to talk to this person. And we did. And we interviewed him. And when we got to the end of the process and Susan and I circled back, we both were in agreement that we thought he was going to really serve our interests well, very well-connected here in Olympia, and has lots of experience in lots of different areas. So I'm here to introduce him to you tonight and let him say a few words and introduce himself. So please help me welcome your new state lobbyist, Nick Federici.
Thank you, Jay. And Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, excited to work with you. Nick Federici, this will be my 32nd legislative session, working under the dome and excited to work with you and help advance your priorities for the city and the people that you serve. Happy to answer questions about who I am. And we'll have lots of time to get to know each other as session gets closer. And as we go through that, excited to help facilitate a successful, if long legislative session in 2025 and work with you to help develop your agenda between now and then. So happy to answer any questions you have about me or the work I've done.
Thank you very much, Nick, and welcome. Mayor Proton Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Gilman. Councilmember Cooper.
Welcome, Nick. I'm Ian. Thanks for choosing Olympia. Curious, what would you say is unique about you as a lobbyist?
What is unique about me? I definitely have the loudest laugh at the Capitol and am well-renowned for my joviality, I would say, and my ability to get along with almost everyone. So I would say that that serves me well in getting things done and avoiding making too many enemies, I would like to think. And I think helps me advance the agenda of the organizations that I work with. And I want to say I'm very excited to work with the city of Olympia. Was a longtime resident here until just a few years ago. And so I think there's a great harmony between the issues that I work on. I've long worked on human services, healthcare, affordable housing issues, environmental protection issues for other organizations, as well as for a special, select, elite group of cities. And so happy to work with the most special, select, elite city of Olympia.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Full disclosure, I've had the opportunity to work with Nick in multiple roles over the years. And getting him on this contract is one more way to help convince his wife to move to Olympia. That should have been his answer about why he's a good lobbyist, because of his wife is pretty amazing, too. But really, Nick, I wanted to welcome you to the city of Olympia family. You're in for a real treat. It's a special place. Everyone gets tired of me saying it's world-class and it's because of our staff. And honestly, though, because we, as a council, work with our staff to reflect the values of our community. And that puts us in a leading place in a lot of different conversations. And Nick really is the one for these conversations. I know you've heard me ask this question, and I know you hate it, but look in your crystal ball and talk to us about this coming legislative session for a few sentences.
Jim asked me this question a lot. I'm sorry, Councilmember Cooper asked me this question a lot in various contexts. It's a long legislative session, 105 days, middle of January through the end of April. It's going to be a tight fiscal situation because of the, even though the economy is thriving in many parts of the state, revenues are lagging behind that. There'll be an even deeper fiscal crisis, really, for the state if some of the initiatives on the ballot pass. And so I think that the watchword I'm hearing from legislators is one of caution, to be restrained in what we ask of them. But as I said, it's my 32nd year. I've never not been told that by legislators either. So, you know, I think it makes sense to have a bold and assertive agenda that represents your values and represents the community that you serve, while tempering that with the recognition that we're going to get a lot of pushback and there's going to be a lot of competition for the dollars that are there, particularly for anything new. That being said, nothing ventured, nothing gained. And so I'm always excited to press forward and, you know, be told no and then press forward a little more, even nicely, and see what we can accomplish. So I think that's what we're going to face. And, you know, we'll have a new gubernatorial administration with their own priorities that I think could shake up some things as well, both in the way that the state does business, as well as potentially some of the priorities that rise to the top.
Thank you, Nick. I really appreciate that. And one thing to lift up is just to remind ourselves to make sure we schedule the opportunity to consider a position on the initiatives, because they have such a big impact on the next biennial budget and just about everything. We would be asking for it to help people who'll be tied up in those initiatives' outcomes. So thank you, Nick.
Any additional questions from council? All right, seeing none. Just welcome, Nick. As I told you in private, I'll say it publicly, your reputation precedes you in a good way. And very much looking forward to you putting your extensive experience to use for us. And so we just thank you in advance, because we know it's going to be quite the session. It's going to be a long session this year. And very much looking forward to seeing what you can do advocating for us up on Capitol Hill. Our legislative agenda tends to be one that is very much forward-thinking. And usually, year after year, you see some of the same items there, because our constituents expect us to. And whether or not it's a tall order is not the point. We strive for the most North Star to achieve the most equitable outcomes for our constituents. So we thank you for your commitment to that as well.
Very excited and privileged and honored to be able to work with you and with those that you serve. So thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Okay, so before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I do just want to mention that item 6D, which is the approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of 12 patrol vehicles through the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services Purchase Program in obligating funds for such purchase, has been moved to the September 17th agenda. And so with that, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So the first item this evening is item 2A, which is Special Recognition, a proclamation recognizing the Festival of Stachas. And we have a shared reading of the proclamation, beginning with Councilmember Cooper.
Whereas the city of Olympia recognizes the Squawson Island Tribe has a direct lineage as the original inhabitants of the Stachas, also known as Bud Inlet. And whereas Squawson people have resided in Stachas since the recession of the glacier at the last ice age, some 14,000 years ago, and...
Whereas Squawson continues a cultural legacy as people of the water because of the bounty of the region's maritime waterways, Artesian River Creek waters, which have sustained the people for millennia. And whereas the city of Olympia honors and acknowledges the Stachas people who have stewed this land since time immemorial, who continue to inhabit the area today, and...
Whereas both the Squawson Island Tribe and city of Olympia honor the Medicine Creek Treaty and have established a strong government-to-government relationship between the two sovereigns. And whereas the Festival of the Stachas on August 17th, 2024, is a day to recognize and celebrate the local heritage, culture, and history while honoring past, current, and future generations, and...
Whereas both the Squawson Island Tribe and the city of Olympia honor the 50th anniversary of Judge Bolt during the Festival of Stachas. And whereas the city of Olympia holds in accord with the Squawson Island Tribe, which includes action for dam removal, the coordination and cooperation to protect shared natural resources, and protection to salmon resources, and...
Whereas both the Squawson Island Tribe and the city of Olympia will work in collaboration to strengthen our stewardship of the Salish Sea, building a strong cultural in support of water quality and salmon recovery, and...
Whereas concluding the Festival of Stachas for all to participate as witnesses will be the Healing of the Water Ceremony, focused on the importance of the gifts of springs, rivers, streams, lakes, and maritime waters. And whereas the Squawson Island Tribe carries a large responsibility to protect and sustain our natural world, the ceremony will symbolize the connectiveness to land, water, and people, and...
Now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council proclaims August 17th, 2024, as Festival of the Stachas Day in the city of Olympia. And we urge all residents to become more aware of the significance of this celebration and its role in the heritage of our nation and our city. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 13th day of August, 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor. So at this time, I'd like to invite up the chairman of the Squawson Island Tribe, Chris Peters, to the podium.
Okay, well, Hockshle hail, good day. Mayor, city council, and my friends, you guys are all my friends. I appreciate that. And I don't just say that. We have built a relationship over these last handful of years. Every single one of you, I truly mean that, we are friends. This is meaningful to us as Squawsons. As you said in your proclamation, the Stachas people, a band of people, you know, they lived here. They lived here for 10,000 to 14,000 years. And they stewarded these lands and these waters. And they are our ancestors. Our blood runs through them. And we as Squawsons, I remember hearing Clark once say, you know, the Squawsons don't come from the island. We were put on the island. And that's exactly right. We come from a large area, including the city of Olympia. And when I say we're connected to this land, that's not a cliche. It is real. It is true. 10,000 years, 150 years doesn't get rid of that 10,000 years, especially when it comes to my family and my bloodline. And so honoring those folks, I think that's the least we can do as today, the people who currently live here, is to honor those folks that were here before us. And it's especially meaningful, not just because it's a value as Squawsons to honor our ancestors, but when you think about why do we honor our ancestors? Why do we do that? It's to maintain who they are, their beliefs, their values, their history. Bring it to today and then carry it forward to future generations. That's why we do that. And it's so neat to be here in Olympia with a lot of my family and my loved ones, because I'm so proud of the tribe that we are today. We just got off our canoe journey. We had our first salmon ceremony recently. And we're doing all these cultural events that continue to maintain our culture and our history, and it strengthens us. And so it's all about honoring our past so that we can uplift today, so that we can carry on these for future generations. And with that, the cool thing is with things like this, because as Squawsons, we're going to do this stuff anyways. We're so proud of the city of Olympia for embracing this and inviting all of the community, everyone, to enjoy this festival, to come together as family, because that's where we're at today. Honor us as community, as Olympia, as Chutwut, Stachas, the Squawson, and the greater community of Thurston and Olympia area, together, moving forward. So that's what's meaningful to me. And I'm so thankful to all of you. Say how it tubes is thank you to each and every one of you, my friends. I don't know if anyone else from the tribe or Dirt wants to come up and say a few words about the festival. I would be honored to hear from anyone else. You don't have to. But if you want to talk a little bit about the festival, Sue, about what's going to happen for the day, I put you on the spot. You didn't plan on talking, obviously. But I am honored that you're here today. So thank you all.
Well, we have a full day. I'm Sue Patnood. I'm with Deshute's Estuary Restoration Team. Been involved in this issue for, I don't know, 20, 25 years. But we have a full day Saturday. It's going to be really fun. And one of the first things that's going to happen in the morning is there'll be a few speeches, of course. And then there will be an intercultural exchange between the tribes. Medicine Treaty Tribes will be there. Then we're going to have workshops and education opportunities for people. There'll be vendors all along the walkway in Heritage Park selling their wares. Lots of nonprofits have signed up for booths. And let's see, in the afternoon, we have Rena Priest, who was a poet laureate, and she's going to do some readings. And to top it all off, at the end of the day, before the Healing of the Water Ceremony, there will be Saltwater Hank. And he is, he is a, what, what language does he sing in?
He sings a separate language, but it's Simchin.
Simchin language? He sings, all his songs are Simchin. But he's a blues guitarist, and he's just going to be great. So we're really excited. And then, of course, the Healing of the Water Ceremony will take place in front of the dam. Canoes will come in, and the Medicine Creek Treaty Tribes will share the waters. And that's going to be, you know, it's going to be quite the ceremony. It will be emotional, so. But hey, come on down, you know? This is amazing. And Dirt has had the most wonderful relationship with the tribe. We are allies. We work closely together. We're sharing this experience. We've had meetings, ongoing meetings now for quite a while, planning this festival. So I hope to see you all there, and thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from your delegation that'd like to speak?
Michelle.
All right. So any comments from the dais? Councilmember Madron.
Just want to thank you all for being here and all of your work to bring this festival together. I look forward to attending. And just wanted to hold up what Chairman Peters was saying, that we're all here as friends. And I think that is such a beautiful thing. And, you know, my time on council, like, we've had Squawson Island here in this room with us for so many really momentous occasions. And how incredible is it that we're at this point where we know that that dam is going to come out? There's still a lot of work. There's still a lot of work ahead of us, but it's happening. Like, that is the forward momentum, and it is just so beautiful. So thanks again for being here, and I look forward to celebrating with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parsha.
I just want to echo everything Councilmember Madron said. And also, as Sue was talking and Chris, I was dreaming of the day of what this festival will look like when we have the estuary back. And what a joy that will be that first year. I read the Olympian article. I've also been part of this through a lot. And I know we're being kept up to date, but I'm just so excited when I heard in 2028 they're going to start doing their first dredging of the lake. It's not the dam coming out, but it's a start.
Any additional comments? I'll just keep mine brief and just say, what a time to be alive. This is history in the making, and I'm very, very proud to be part of it with you. So congratulations. And yeah, would like to invite you up for a photo, all of you that are here, and present you with the proclamation. So we'll keep the Special Recognition going, and we will move on to our next item, which is item 2B, Special Recognition Proclamation Recognizing Women's Equality Day, which is also a shared reading amongst the council, beginning with Councilmember Cooper.
This one's hard to start out without saying I'm mad that we have to keep doing Whereas the city of Olympia recog... First of all, let me get this right. Whereas in 1972, Congress designated August 26th as Women's Equality Day to commemorate the certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution, which guarantees the right to vote shall not be denied on the basis of sex. And whereas the 19th Amendment was certified due to the sacrifices and tireless work of women from every state, race, cultural, and religious backgrounds, and...
Whereas now, over a century after the certification of the 19th Amendment, many women still face barriers to voting, particularly women who are color, immigrant, LGBTQ+, disabled, and otherwise marginalized. And whereas, despite working to pass the 19th Amendment, women of color were effectively denied the right to vote through state laws, violence, and discrimination for another 45 years until the passage of the Voting Rights Act in 1965, and...
Whereas black women continue to lead the way in communities that are most impacted and continue to protect voting rights and build communities and policies that are equitable and safe for all. And whereas, while the fight for women's equality has always been grounded in the right to vote, a century after it was first introduced, the fight to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment still continues, and...
Whereas one year after Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Center Supreme Court decision, multiple states have attacked the right to bodily autonomy for women and those who can become pregnant. And whereas the state of Washington leads the country in accessible and equitable voting rights, thanks to legislation centering accessible voter registration, mail-in ballots, and restoring voting rights for individuals convicted of a felony who have served their time, and...
Whereas Washington State has created an address confidentiality program, allowing people fleeing gender-based violence to register to vote without the fear of allowing their abusers to see their address. People in this program are provided a substitute mailing address that can be used to register to vote in other government-created records, and...
Whereas over three-quarters of women responding to a 2022 YWCA USA survey were united in supporting policy solutions that end gender-based violence and support local domestic violence services. And whereas paid family leave is a top priority for most women, but particularly women of color, over three-quarters of AAPI Indigenous and Latina women said passing a federal paid leave law is one of their top 10 priorities for Congress, and...
Now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim August 26th, 2024, as Women's Equality Day in the city of Olympia, and celebrates the continued effort for equality for all women and the removal of barriers to the resources, support, and opportunities women need to live thriving and healthy lives. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 13th day of August, 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor. And now I'd like to invite up Ally Ewing, co-executive director of the YWCA, and Tally Economy, also the co-executive director of the YWCA, for a few words, and to accept the proclamation.
Thank you so much, Mayor Payne and the city council of Olympia. Although these tiny humans are not my co-executive director, Tally Economy, they are here in spirit, and these little friends are here in real life with me today. Through our tireless work to eliminate racism and empower women at YWCA's across the country, we see every day what women, gender expansive folks, families, and our communities need to thrive. The national survey referenced in the proclamation was conducted by the YWCA USA, Y Women Vote Initiative, and confirms what these communities have been telling us, that women are united in their support for economic, caregiving, gender-based violence, health, and racial justice policy solutions that address our shared concerns. These findings provide policymakers from city council and mayoral offices to state legislatures to Congress with a blueprint for ensuring that we can live in safety and thrive. YWCA's dual mission demands that we center the experiences and needs of women and girls of color, who are often overlooked when policy decisions are made. And our mission compels us to support sharing this data as an essential step in our larger movement work to dismantle systemic and structural racism, while also shining a light on how systemic inequalities shape the experiences and lives of women. Our votes determine the direction and values of our community and nation for years to come. Whether it's the president, Congress, state legislatures, and local city councils, each of these offices holds a great deal of power. From the kinds of medical care we can access, to the ways our federal and state and local governments invest in childcare, victim services, and so much more, the results of our elections have a direct impact on our day-to-day lives. At YWCA, we're deeply invested in ensuring that everyone who can participate in the hard one right to vote. My shoes are very interesting behind the podium. Especially women, including women, young women of color, and those in communities who have been overlooked due to deeply entrenched legacies of gender and racial discrimination in our social structures and institutions. I'll conclude with gratitude for folks who have come before us, and my very fun shoes, apparently, who work to continue to expand representation, voting rights, and access, and ensuring that as many voices as possible are heard. Although we've come far here in our community, our rights are connected to those experiencing increased barriers to voting access across the country and limited representation in their communities. We, as a community, can only be as well as those most impacted by oppression across the globe. We all have the opportunity to continue to bring light to these barriers as we illuminate our vision at YWCA Olympia, building a community where all people are valued, live free from oppression, and thrive in a just society. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Gilman.
First, you passed the test. That would look like quite a challenge. Thank you.
I shoelace.
First, I want to appreciate the YWCA, in particular, the local YWCA's anti-racist work over many years. It's been a real benefit to our community. And I want to share Councilmember Cooper's sort of astonishment that we're still at a point where we have to debate whether half the people in the room should be treated the same as the other half, which is just unimaginable. So if there's anybody out there who actually has an argument or a reason that they think this kind of difference should stand... this kind of difference should stand, debate me on Facebook or whatever, because you make no sense to me. Thanks.
Councilmember personally.
Oh, that's so hard to follow. Thank you for coming, and thank you for all the work that the YWCA does for us. I've gotten to know Karen Fraser a bit over this terms, being on city council, and she taught me something when we were working together with the state, recognition of the hundred-year signing of the 19th Amendment. And that is, Washington's original constitution had the right to vote for women, and it was Congress that took it away once they figured out we did it. But then, when the 19th Amendment came along, we were one of the top 10 states that signed it in 1910, long before it actually became—10 years before it became a law of the country. But nowadays, I'm looking at a state that is considered one of the standards in voting rights. And there's even some people that think, well, there's not much more we can do to, one, make it safe and available, and no barriers. We are, will continue with our great Thurston County, a Mary Hall auditor, who is a champion of all these. But I also kind of sit here in awe of thinking about all the work we've done with equity. But every time we line up a woman's pay, no matter what color their skin or culture, it's always going to be less than the man of the same skin or culture. We haven't come very far. And I agree, Councilmember Gilman, when are we going to have to stop? When are we going to get to a point where we don't have to make proclamations?
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
To add on to that, I mean, I've seen this experience from my own mother, and lives in Ohio. She's in administration and education. She has a doctorate. Some of the people above her don't have a doctorate, but yet, because she's not—she's the only non-male member of the administration of the education system she works in in Ohio, she is just—she keeps getting running into this barrier. So she's at this point where she may just end up retiring despite spending all this time working on her superintendent license and working, you know, with getting her doctorate. And it's unfortunate, it's at every level. I mean, it's just—it's unbelievable. And we have to get to the point where that's just not accepted anymore, these barriers that people put up. So, that's all I'd say.
Thanks for sharing that. Any other questions or comments? I'll just say, first of all, thank you for being here, and I'd like to thank the YWCA, as Councilmember Gilman just said, for your anti-racism work. But I just want to say this, I hope the irony of children around your feet at the podium in the city council chambers is an irony that's not lost on anybody as we talk about this. To me, it's a sign of—that women can and do do it all. So, thank you for bringing them, actually. It's a very powerful image to watch. And I think we're all thinking about our mothers, and our sisters, and our friends, and our aunts, and our cousins, and all of the powerful women we know who have changed and transformed our lives. And so, yeah. That's just where I'm at right now. So I'll sit with that. And I will invite you up for a photo and present me with the proclamation.
My feet have ironically been tied together at this point. So I will shuffle on up there.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper, for the great suggestion. So, if you support women and you are in the chambers, please come forward and stand up and join us for the photo. For a much better image, thank you, Councilmember Cooper, for the suggestion. So, we will move on to our final item for special recognition this evening, which is a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of the West Olympia Rotary. And reading that proclamation this evening is Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Ready, ready, good. All right. Whereas, Rotary was formed as the world's first service club in Chicago in 1905, and has since grown into a global network of 1.4 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers, who see a world where people unite and take action to create lasting change across the globe and in our communities. And whereas, Rotary is well-established throughout Thurston County and is home to nine individual Rotary Clubs serving our local communities. And whereas, from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025, West Olympia Rotary is celebrating its 50th anniversary and their 50 years of service to West Olympia and beyond. And whereas, West Olympia Rotary was instrumental in establishing South Puget Sound Community Colleges Foundation in 1982, which has gone on to support our community's college students with millions of dollars in scholarships, as well as professional professor and other college support. And whereas, West Olympia Rotary created its own endowment fund that provides resources to support six scholarships annually for graduating students from Olympia schools, and since 2006 has awarded scholarships to 91 students. And whereas, West Olympia Rotary has supported and hosted 40 inbound exchange students from 22 different countries and 38 outbound exchange students in 18 different countries, 21 pairs of summer exchanges between seven countries. And whereas, West Olympia Rotary was developed—and developed a generous charities fund that supports nonprofits and schools throughout West Olympia and beyond, and has grown to distribute more than $25,000 each year to our community. And whereas, West Olympia Rotary has been a key partner in helping secure funds from Rotary International to support health, water, and sanitation projects to rule Bolivia. And whereas, West Olympia Rotary was an active participant in raising funds and providing volunteer support for the development of Rotary Point at West Bay Park. And whereas, in honor of the 50th anniversary, the West Olympia Rotary Club has pledged to raise $50,000 to install a new Life is Water art installation at Rotary Point, which is being carved by Squawson Island Tribal Artist Taylor Christ—
Christ.
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 Sorry. Whereas, West Olympia Rotary has grown its membership to nearly 80 individuals who live by the Rotary motto of "service above self" and continuously work to make Olympia and our world a better place to live. And now therefore it be resolved that the Olympia City Council recognizes the 50th anniversary of the Rotary Club of West Olympia and does hereby proclaim August 13th, 2024, as West Olympia Rotary Day. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, on the 13th day of August, 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
And at this time, I'd like to invite up the West Olympia Rotary President, Katia Multmore.
Mayor Payne and honorable members of Olympia City Council, thank you for giving me an opportunity for some short remarks. My club's accomplishments have been very well listed in the proclamation, and we really appreciate the city council taking the time to recognize the impact that the West Olympia Rotary Club has had on our community. Joining me here today are just a few of our West Olympia Rotary Club members. Wave in the back. And we actually also have a, hopefully, incoming Rotarian, a past Capital High School Interact member in the front row here, happens to be my daughter, came here under minor protest. But we—so, in some ways, we're ordinary citizens, in some ways, we're community leaders. When you look at us, we are architects, we're doctors, we're lawyers, we're nonprofit executives, we're marina owners, pastors, automotive repair shops, and I'm sure I didn't name a few folks back there, but it's just about every member of the community. And in some ways, we're ordinary like that. We're just like you, and we're just everybody else in this room. But we're also extremely committed to service. For Rotary, our motto is "service above self," and that alone, I believe, makes us community leaders, and we're proud to be in that capacity. We've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to support pretty much every single nonprofit in Olympia and Thurston County. Probably every single elementary, middle, and high school has had an impact of our Rotary Club or some of the other Rotary Clubs by us providing volunteer hours, support, and mentorship to young, upcoming Rotarians like my daughter and her friends. And so, we are extremely dedicated to service. Service is really the one and only thing that mostly attracts new folks to our clubs, and we're honored to be recognized on this day. We're also—I'm disappointed that the Squawson Group had already left, because I would have really loved for them to recognize the fact that we chose one of their own, Taylor Christ, as a Squawson Island Tribal Artist, who is currently working on preparing this beautiful gift for the City of Olympia. And that is probably a reflection, a little bit, on Rotary's new commitment to just equality and recognizing local communities and recognizing the places where we are for what they are. And so with that, I want to thank you all very much for this recognition. We look to at least 50 more years of service in this community, and we look forward to doing this in partnership with the city, with the citizens of the City of Olympia, so that we can continue to make it a welcome and vibrant community that it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Katia. Any questions or comments from the deists? Councilmember Gilman.
I want to appreciate and thank—my daughter was one of the 38 outbound exchange people you described, and it changed our family a lot, that there was her experience going to the Canary Islands. We hosted a young man from Thailand, and then we had an exchange student for a year from Prague stay with us. And each of those relationships have continued, and our daughter has lived all around the world the last two and a half years, working remotely. And so, thank you. Thank you for that opportunity and the launch, and we still have the jacket full of 100 patches hanging in the closet.
We're famous for our crazy jackets.
Any additional comments? Mayor Protimwen.
Just gratitude for being here tonight. Just gratitude for being here tonight. Really, always lovely to hear from you. This is at least the second time that you've come to our council, is that right? Yeah, and a second look that we've got, just a surrendering anyways. And so, looking forward to being there for the unveil, hopefully, and I wouldn't be surprised if Squawson Island Tribal members were there as well.
Yes, we were planning on a combined dedication ceremony, and they really wanted to make sure that there was a song and drum circle to recognize kind of the significance of that installation. We are planning this for next spring, because our 50th year goes on for a full year, and so we're probably going to finish our year with the installation to give Taylor enough time to carve and just not to rush it. And then, you know, the dirt is really soggy around here for about eight months of the year, so we want to make sure it's on solid footing, like just like everything else we try to do.
Very, very fair. Thank you, and love to see your advocacy for younger generations of Rotarians, right? So these important service clubs continue.
Thank you.
You are frustrated by these mics, and rightfully so. Councilmember personally.
Yeah, they periodically go on and off, just like I demonstrated. Thank you for coming, and thank you for the "Life is Water." We had a council-to-council meeting, and they opened my eyes, the tribe, saying that they come to Olympia by water, we come by car. So you're helping beautify their trip into our town with this at that point. I just want to let you know, it's almost weird that that comes along, and the West Bay Park is part of what they see when they come to Olympia. So, thank you.
We're excited. We just actually walked the site with city staff to determine the precise location of this art piece, and we chose a piece that's meaningful both to—I hope is meaningful both to our club and to the Squawson Island Tribe. For us, it's going to be right at the entrance to the pathway where all of the presidents get their bricks. We get bricked at the end of our service. But the background for the piece is actually going to be the bay and Squawson Park. And so, I think it's going to be a very good location that celebrates both the legacy of the tribe and the legacy of our club and our contribution to the park.
Any additional comments? Thank you very much, Katia, for your service to the community, and I want to thank all of the Rotarians in the room and all of the Rotarians who may be watching remotely. We thank you, all of the Rotary Clubs of Olympia, for your service and dedication to our community. And specifically, what I want to call out is the invitations that I get to come and speak to you all and engage, that demonstrates your commitment to civic engagement and by extending your commitment to service. And so, I just appreciate you doing that, because I think it's important for people to hear, you know, what our vision is for our community and where we're going, and what you might be able to do to help. And whenever I meet any of you, your questions are always very pointed and very directed towards a service-oriented kind of question that is going to have a meaningful impact on people's lives. And so that's something, when I look at you all, when I think of a Rotarian, I think of that first. I've never met one of you that has asked me a personal, a personally motivated selfish question. It's always been about the broader community, and I thank you and I congratulate you on 50 more years or even more of service to our community, and thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. We're always recruiting you members.
Well, we'll see after this mayor thing. All right, so with—yes, so at this time, I'll present you with the proclamation, invite you, all of the Rotarians in the remote, for a photo. all of the Rotarians in the remote for a photo. All right, so that concludes special recognition for this evening, so we will now move on to public comment. We do have a few people signed up in chambers this evening as well as online. So before we get started, I'd just like to do a few housekeeping rules. There is a clock to my right and your left here on the wall indicating two minutes of time. You have a box there on the podium with green, yellow, and red lights. The green light indicating that your time has begun, the yellow light indicating that you have about thirty seconds remaining in your comments, and the red light indicating that your time has expired. If you do not finish your comments, feel free to email them to us. And just a reminder that we are in an election season, so please refrain from mentioning or expressing your support or opposition to a candidate or ballot measure in your comments this evening. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the Mayor Protem.
All right, so go ahead and call the folks that came to public comment in person first. So we have Mark Fleming, followed by Joanne DeFour, followed by Jay Bernberg.
Good evening, Mayor Payne, members of the council. My name is Mark Fleming, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Olympia Coalition to Abolish Nuclear Weapons. This week, we are hosting the sailboat, the historic sailboat, Golden Rule, here at Percival Landing. The boat is historic in that it first sailed to protest nuclear weapons by disrupting nuclear tests in the Pacific Ocean in 1958, and these days, it continues this mission by educating people about the dangers of nuclear war. I want to thank Mayor Payne for issuing a proclamation welcoming the Golden Rule and encouraging Olympians to come out and visit. They will be here on August 15th and 16th at Percival Landing, and I encourage, I invite you all to come down, as well as members of the audience and anyone listening online. They have a, can explain their mission, and they also have the opportunity to take some people out on the boat. So if you get that chance, please come down. And again, we also want to thank this council and previous councils for their continued support for our approach to abolishing nuclear weapons. You passed a resolution last year, a previous one a year before, and we really do appreciate that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have Joanne DeFour?
Yes. Yes, I am also a member of the Olympia Coalition, and I wanted to say that it's very appropriate to be here to thank you immensely. You have been such a wonderful support, and you have shown, and you have made history. I heard that word before, and you're making more history. Last September, you supported the Treaty to Abolish Nuclear Weapons. You became the seventy-third city in the United States to support that treaty. I'd like to let you know that you're not alone. There is an additional seventy-fourth city, I'm not sure which one it was, but not from Washington. There were only two cities in Washington, Olympia and Walla Walla. And I'm trying to think of the support that the lobbyists might be able to do here because I understand that Renton and Redmond and some Mamish city councils might be considering what you led. Worldwide, when I reported to you worldwide, there were seven hundred thirty-nine cities worldwide. Okay, you were the seventy-third, but you're part of a network then of seven hundred thirty-nine. Now, we're up to eight hundred and forty-six cities worldwide. We are making news and headway, and we're extremely thankful for the leadership that you have shown.
Thank you. Then we have Jay Bernberg, followed by Colton Rose.
Hi, my name is Jay Bernberg. I'm an attorney in Tacoma with, for about thirty years, and I'm here to talk tonight about psilocybin a little bit. And prior to becoming an attorney, I worked, I was down at Arizona State University. I did a master's degree in religious studies. I wrote on peyote and the Native American Church. So I spent several years in peyote TPs in Arizona, New Mexico, and Navajo Reservation. Since 1997, I've been working with medical marijuana patients and providers, so I've got quite a bit of experience working with plant medicine. A couple of years ago, we had Senate Bill 5660, which I think our legislature will be taking up again, which would legalize psilocybin services for people in Washington. And I got really interested in that, started looking at the body of literature and the academic research done from John Hopkins University and Imperial University in London and a lot of the case studies. The work that's been done with psilocybin in the way of depression, PTSD, end-of-life issues, palliative care is absolutely amazing, and the way these plant medicines work. You know, in law, we frequently do balancing tests. We look at competing interests, you know, and so we look at the ancient wisdom that's come to us from the indigenous people, have been using these medicines for thousands of years. We add that to the research that's being done now, and the weight is an evidentiary issue, the weight of a balancing test is tremendous. The only thing really on the other side of it is stupid, you know? We've all heard the story about young men takes psychedelic drug, jumps out a window, thought he could fly. Well, as Bill Hicks said, if you thought he could fly, why didn't he just take off from the ground, you know? We don't have ducks lining up at the elevator, you know? And there's going to always be stupid, but it's very small, and it doesn't weigh very much as an evidentiary matter. The opportunity to help people, to decriminalize psilocybin in Olympia is amazing, and I really applaud you all for thinking about that and considering it. Thank you.
All right, I believe that's Colton Rose.
Hello, Mayor Payne, council. My name is Colton Rose. I'm with UFCW Local 367. We are a union of about eight thousand grocery store workers in the area, including all the Safeways, Fred Meyer's, Albertson's, the Hagan on West Side, Bayview Thriftway down the street, and Ralph's Thriftway up the hill. And I just wanted to report to you guys, some of you I'm sure already know, that last month, we held a workers' rights summit down at the Olympia Center. It was on Saturday, the twentieth, it was Lake Fair Saturday. There were streets shut down for the parades, parking was a nightmare, but we still had nearly a hundred area workers show up to express support for a workers' bill of rights that would include secure scheduling so that people know their schedules two weeks in advance so that they can plan their lives, opportunity to get up to full-time work before an employer hires additional part-time workers, and wages that are in line with what workers in King County are getting so that people can just keep up with the cost of living. Some of you were in that room, and I'm sure you saw the energy that was there, the support, and I'm just here to say on behalf of Local 367 that we are looking forward to working with the council to, you know, pass some of the strongest worker protections in the country to ensure that Olympia continues to be a great place for people to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could please just refrain from applause in the chambers during a public comment so that the Mayor Protem can keep calling the names, please. Thank you.
All right, I believe we're ready for the virtual public comment, and I see Kelly, you're probably pulling that up. All right, so we have two signed up for virtual public comment. We first have Paul Stamets, followed by Cody Zalewski. Paul, Paul should be available to unmute and take off his camera. All right. Paul, when you're ready, you can go ahead and unmute and come on camera and share your public comment.
Yes, thank you for your assistance in the background. Are you able to see and hear me?
We can hear you, all right. We can't see you.
Okay, maybe your tech people can help me out on that. Okay, thank you.
Oh, there you are.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll start my clock here. My name is Paul Stamets. I moved to Olympia in 1975. I've been studying psilocybin mushrooms for the past fifty years. I've written eight books and published several new species in the genus Solosophy, which contains most of the psilocybin mushrooms. Olympia has been a center of mycological research. Many of you know Margaret McKenney. She was an amateur mycologist who published a book with Daniel Stunts. Michael Buig was my professor at the Evergreen State College, and in 1979, I graduated. Prior to that, we received a DEA license, which I just, was renewed today, a separate license we have for analytical purposes with psilocybin. I started a small mail-order business. I now employ a hundred and fifty employees. I'm the sole owner of that business. But to give you perspective, and we don't sell psilocybin, we have no intention of selling psilocybin, nature provides I don't, and I want to make that very clear. I'm very strict about that, and nevertheless, we're dedicated to education. So to give you some perspective very quickly, there's two hundred and seventeen known species of psilocybin around the world, about twenty species of psilocybin active mushrooms in Washington State. If you go to clinicaltrials.gov, there's a hundred and eighty-four clinical trials registered at clinicaltrials.gov. In 2019, the FDA declared psilocybin therapy as a breakthrough therapy for treating depression. The Ran Institute surveyed Americans, and in 2023, eight million Americans consumed psilocybin or admitted to. I'm advocating for the decriminalization of psilocybin and other ethiogens to the lowest priority of law enforcement. I personally believe, and this is not part of the bill, I believe that possession of a hundred dry grams of psilocybin mushrooms can be permitted with no financial transactions and no distribution outside of family members. The big take-home here is not only treatment, but prevention. Psilocybin makes nicer people, more law-abiding people, and I think we can prevent a lot of the trauma and tragedies that we're seeing today by facilitating the response that we use psilocybin. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Unfortunately, your time has run up. Thank you. All right, next we have Cody Zalewski.
Cody is traveling.
Can you hear and see me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Excellent. Hello, Olympia City Council, my name is Cody Zalewski with the Psychedelic Medicine Alliance of Washington. I strongly ask you to support the decriminalization resolution for natural psychedelics. These compounds have demonstrated incredible efficacy in numerous medical uses despite being labeled as a Schedule I compound by the federal government. Olympia would join dozens of other cities around the country in demonstrating support for this change in public attitude and send a message to the state government to take action on this issue. Thank you, and I cede my time.
Thank you. All right, with no others signed up for public comment, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Any comments from the dais? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you to everyone this evening. We'll be talking about psilocybin in a minute, and I'm really glad that we're seeing a growth in cities signing on to the Nuclear Free Treaty. That's also exciting. And then I wanted to say thank you to our friends from UFCW for being here. I also look forward to a day when we have predictive scheduling, full-time work, and living wages for all workers in Olympia. So thanks for fighting that fight, and I hope the city will join with you.
Councilmember Parsley.
My marks will be pretty brief. Thank you for those that were here for the nuclear weapons. I remember being trained to get under my desk as if that would do anything if we had a nuclear bomb. So I do agree with all that, and we'll talk about the psilocybin in a bit. What was brought forward for workers' bill of rights is in line with the Olympia Strong, and just going to put that out there. All the things that we learned through our survey and our work about living wages, secure housing, secure food, and affordable childcare is in alignment with that.
Great points. Councilmember Gilman.
Great. Well, I'll just share the appreciation for all three issues that come up, and I wanted to say that I'm eager to continue the work around a workers' bill of rights, and I'm glad that on the September agenda for the Finance Committee for the city, that we're going to talk about sort of what's the, what's the schedule for beginning to do that work. So I appreciate that being on the agenda.
Councilmember Parsley, you have a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up. Some of this was actually a referral by Councilmember Cooper. Was that 2015? Yeah, we're finally getting to it, so that will be discussed in September.
Yeah, I also just want to express gratitude for the folks from UFCW being here this evening, and I think your points are well-taken, Councilmember Parsley, and so I'm interested in seeing what more we can do to support your efforts. Those who came tonight to speak about our support of the abolishment of nuclear weapons, I'll just say this as a veteran, it's really surprising to me to see that there are so many communities that are not willing to sign on to something like that. The reason being that it's an ideal, and I understand that in a real-world reality is we have nuclear weapons, but we should strive for the highest of our ideals and ultimately not have them. And so that's why I'm proud to support something like that, and I hope to see more cities join us in the future. So thank you for your continued work and advocacy in that regard, and there'll be more to come on the other items that were spoken to in a moment. All right, so with that, we will move on to the adoption of the consent calendar. But before we do, I do just want to mention that in the meeting minutes, there is language that mentions that the city's contract lobbyist was introduced. He actually was not last week, so we are striking that language. He was here this evening, and so I need a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to our first business item this evening, item 6A, which is approval of a resolution declaring the investigation, arrest, and prosecution of anyone engaging in ethiogen-related activities should be among the City of Olympia's lowest law enforcement priorities and stating the City Council's support for full decriminalization of these activities. And here to present this evening is our very own city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, members of council, again, Jay Burney, city manager. I am here tonight to provide the background material requested in the referral around ethiogens to aid in your discussions this evening around the proposed resolution that the mayor just mentioned. Just looking at the current law, which is one of the questions that councilmembers had, the law refers to these fungi ethiogens as psilocybin. Psilocybin is a controlled substance that is categorized as a Schedule I hallucinogen in Washington State law. For purposes of Schedule I narcotics, it's unlawful to knowingly possess a controlled substance or use a controlled substance in public without a valid prescription. And then again, manufactured delivery or possession with intent to deliver a controlled substance is also a Class C felony. In this case, psilocybin falls in that category, again, under State RCW 69.50.204. In terms of enforcement of the laws, council had asked for a look at, what does this look like here in the City of Olympia? Records for the previous five years did not show any arrests or referrals to the prosecutor's office for the consideration of charges solely on possession of psilocybins. There were five arrests from 2019 to 2024 where psilocybin was present, but in none of those was that arrest the primary reason that person was involved in a law enforcement, with law enforcement. I'm keeping my comments short tonight so you can kind of get to your discussions. I'll just end with this, that in my discussions with Chief Allen, and it's included in the report that's attached to your staff report, he believes there are sufficient language in the resolution, especially the portions of the resolution that clarify what is not permitted, that provides OPD with the tools to address any risks to public safety and still honor the intent of the resolution. In conclusion, in looking at the data provided and after review of Chief Allen's report, I do not see any substantial impacts or significant risks that should council adopt the resolution in front of you this evening. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions before you get to your deliberations.
Thank you, city manager Burney. Any questions from the council? All right, seeing none, I guess we'll get right to it.
And I will hang here and take note of any changes that might come up.
All right. So I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Gilman, who is the prime sponsor of this resolution.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Payne. So this has been a journey for all of us, sort of new territory, some new ideas. And here's where I've landed after conversations with many of you folks and discussions between council. And that's that I initially shared some of the concern about is this legalizing drug use, right? Because both alcohol and opioids have not been kind to my family. And so, you know, I was cautious about that. But as we've learned about these plant medicines and the different treatment modalities that are made possible with these substances, I've come to see this more like the discussions that were held about whether to allow midwives to be part of health insurance, or chiropractic, or acupuncture, that it's, to me, it's about allowing people to seek healing using things that are available in the world to help heal them. And so I'm very proud that we've reached this point in the conversation, and I'm eager to hear from you. But I'm just really, really comfortable now. Where a couple of years ago, when Cody first called me, I was like, what's this? So I just, I appreciate the time and the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I want to thank Councilmember Gilman for your leadership on this. It was great to work with you and Councilmember Vanderpool on bringing this forward. And, you know, when we had advocates that were reaching out to us, you know, my first reaction was like, we have got so many things we're working on at the city, like, you know, why is this a priority? But I took some time to learn about it and chat with some of the folks who were advocating for it. And it actually, it seems like a relatively simple thing for us to do to support people in our community who are asking to be supported in this way and asking for us to represent them as elected officials in this way. And Councilmember Gilman, I really appreciate the comparison to, you know, midwives and other things that were not allowed, you know, because of, you know, because of faulty policy. And really, this is about people who are seeking healing and want to feel safe and protected doing that and don't want to be persecuted for it. And, you know, at the end of the day, like, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for something to be illegal that you can go pick out of your neighbor's yard, to be honest. There wasn't science that was put into creating the policies that make it illegal, and I am very happy to support this resolution this evening.
Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yes, so this is my first time working on a referral, and I'm proud to work on this. I'm proud of the work that my two councilmates have put forward on this. I am glad that the community is, all the emails that we've received and support. And, you know, to me, this feels like something that should have been done a long time ago, right? It really feels like in order to, in order for us to have a society where folks, you know, aren't going, you know, aren't, you know, being arrested for things that grow out of the ground, like, so it's, to me, passing this, it seems like an easy thing to do, and we need to do it. So I'm ready whenever you guys are.
Councilmember Parsley, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I was one of the people that pushed back a bit in the beginning. But I have to applaud my councilmates and the referral process in that you worked really hard, and the referral process worked. So all three of you, thank you, because you were able to help me move to a point where I can support this. But I need to thank the crowd. I'm at heart a geek and a biochemist. And I remember when this first came out, I spent probably three hours on the computer going to PubMed and reading articles. So you taught me a lot. But I'm just going to end with this story. I was on Facebook, I meant it, before I came, and one of my former employees, who's now on the East Coast, who suffered from severe depression, and nobody could help her. And there were points where we feared for her life. And she put this post up that, the first time I've seen her smile. And she's using microdose psilocybin under the care of somebody on the East Coast. So I will echo my councilmates, it's about time. And if you go back and look at the history of cannabis in this country, it's ridiculous some of the things that ended up being scheduled. And you're right, Councilmember Madron, it's kind of silly. You can go into almost any forest around us and pick psilocybin. So thank you. And thank you, all of you, seriously, for working with me. I appreciate it.
Mayor. I messed up. I think my mic was already on. Mayor Protem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I know the majority of folks left in the audience is for this issue. And for me, this one was sort of similar in that, I don't know if my other colleagues would say this, but I was kind of grumpy about this one. I was like, we have so many things to do as a city. Is this even relevant to us? I'm not a doctor, and there are plenty of things. And then I would hear from folks about, well, you know, there are natural things that grow. I was like, well, there's natural things that grow that you should never ingest, you know? So there's this, you know, and then anyways, and then there's everything that I've learned up until this point, right? Before this came across for us, and all of the biases that I had and all of this, just how I've been socialized to understand this. And then I got an uptick in emails, and a lot of folks coming to public comment. And I really, really appreciate the approach in which folks took. I think there was some organizing behind it. And then I also think that there were just some people that heard about it and that maybe lend their voice to it. And it was always very welcoming, very wanting to share information, and being very vulnerable about folks' personal stories. And I'm not a person that does a lot of personal sharing, because I think it is truly a gift when people share stories about themselves. I don't think that people just readily deserve these stories. I think they're so deeply personal and something that should be protected. And so I think for me, this one, I was really heartened by how human people were about this, and it made me want to listen more. And I had some great folks, some that are in the audience tonight, that really welcomed me into their spaces and talked with me about them and about this and just, you know, kind of their life and why they even care about this. And so for me, I am looking forward to voting positively for this one tonight, which is a surprise to me. And so for me, it's the human element, and I don't know everything about these, and I don't need to. I don't really want to. But what I want to do is listen to the people around me and believe them when they share their stories with all of the, and just analyze whatever information I have at the moment. So thank you, thank you for your efforts. I know it's a lot. You all do a lot outside of here, and then you come here and you try to keep pushing something. So hopefully, this effort tonight is, moves forward with a positive vote, and then it can add a little bit more, a little bit more, so it can reach higher levels of government. So thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Everyone's looking at me because I don't know what I'm going to say right now. So I'll just draw the suspense. Actually, so I want to point out, Councilmember Madron's comment, there's no science behind any of this schedule. None of the criminalization of drugs has science behind it in the United States at all. And so I look forward to having a conversation about that. But today, because of the reasons that all of you have stated, I'm here for a yes vote.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Well, I'll just say this, I think I've said quite a bit about this issue before, and that I didn't necessarily need to be sold on all of the positive aspects of the use of psilocybin. And my main concern was around, on the heel of the Blake fix, which we needed to correct course as a state, in my opinion. And my concern was about making sure that our community understands what we're doing. And so I'm just going to say this, I really hope that people will take the time to actually read about what it is that we're doing tonight, resist the urge to just look at a sensationalized headline of what we're doing. It's very important for you to look at the details. So I do just want to say what this resolution does not do. So it does not permit driving under the influence of ethiogenic plants or fungi, permit the possession or distribution of ethiogens in schools, authorize or enable commercial manufacturing or sales of ethiogenic plants or fungi, permit conduct that puts public safety at risk or causes a public nuisance that violates the law, or prohibit or discourage the investigation, arrest, or prosecution of such crimes. So what we're doing tonight is not about legalization. I want to make that very clear. But what we are doing is we are saying to our state government, to our federal government, that we understand that just because we don't necessarily have all of the science and understanding behind alternative therapies doesn't mean that we should outright reject them as a government. In fact, horsemanship is seen as a form of alternative therapy for veterans with PTSD. There's actually a lovely place out in Yelm that does that work. And it's something that unfortunately is not recognized as a mainstream type of therapy. And so, again, with what we were mentioning earlier, this is another form of, another alternative that people are exploring for themselves. And I'm happy to weigh in on that with my support tonight. I do just also want to say that I think it's really important that we recognize that there are people who have committed crimes using these substances. I just want to point out that in the city manager's presentation, there were five arrests where this happened to be part of the scenario within the last five years. And so really, what we're doing tonight is a formality. This is not something that the Olympia Police Department has ever spent a whole lot of time doing. And so we are just simply putting words to paper and saying that we're going to continue those efforts to make that a least priority, to pursue people who are seeking alternative therapies for themselves to improve their lives. I want to thank all of the sponsoring council members for bringing this forward. I will say that it also took me some growing to do on this issue, not necessarily a whole lot, but mostly around the concern for people understanding the nuance of what we're doing, as I said. But also, alcohol and drugs hasn't been kind to my family either. And so I want to make sure that what we're doing is respecting the health and safety of our community members. And I don't share any concern that what we're doing is going to somehow move the needle to jeopardize that in any sort of major way. So thank you all for showing up and advocating not only for yourselves, but for other people who really want to see us move forward, not just as a city, but as a state and as a nation. So thank you very much. And with that, I will entertain a motion from Councilmember Gilman.
Mayor Payne, I would move to approve a resolution declaring the investigation, arrest, and prosecution of anyone engaging in ethiogen-related activities should be among the city of Olympia's lowest law enforcement priorities and stating the city council's support for full decriminalization of these activities.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. All right, thank you very much. So that takes us to our next business item this evening, item 6B, which is a Joint Animal Services update. And here to present this evening is Sarah Hock, the Executive Director of Joint Animal Services.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, city council members. It's always a pleasure to come and talk to you about one of my favorite topics, which is Joint Animal Services. So Joint Animal Services, as a reminder for anybody who is not aware of us, is Thurston County's Primary Regional Animal and Shelter, as well as Animal Control Agency. We have, the Joint Animal Services Commission is comprised of Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, and Thurston County. And we also have appointed members from the community, including a veterinarian, nonprofit that is animal welfare-related, and Thurston County Humane Society. We also contract with several other jurisdictions, including the city of Yelm, the Nisqually Tribe, as well as joint-based Lewis McCourt. So when people think of animal services, a lot of times, they think of what you see above in the iceberg, humane law enforcement strays. It's where you do licensing and maybe adoption. But underneath the service, there is so much more to what our organization provides to the community, from foster programs, we provide advocacy, renification programs, rehoming services, our community cat program, we have a pet pantry, and we also provide food and supplies to other nonprofits around the South Sound to help keep pets in homes, we have a roof-over-rover program, and many, many more to encourage pets staying in home, education about care of animals, as well as helping the community. So some of our last year's accomplishments, one of which was, we finally had our medical suite up and running. This was a labor of love over the last several years that had been inhibited by COVID. And in June, June 15th of 2023, we had our first surgery. And we did more than 60% of our surgeries last year because of that. In December, we hired a full-time veterinarian and a full-time vet assistant. This is the first one that we've had in 40 years. And I'm happy to say that as of June 15th of this year, which was almost a year anniversary from when we started, we have completed over 1,000 spinae eater surgeries in that medical suite. We also did a lot of advocacy in 2023 as well. We supported HB1424, which was consumer protection concerning the sale and adoption of dogs and cats. Olympia, of course, was the frontrunner in supporting this issue long before it became a state issue with banning the retail sales of dogs and cats. We also supported HB1234, which was concerning the civil forfeiture of animals seized for an abuse or neglect, and helped clarify language that protected both the owners as well as the seizing agency. and helped clarify language that protected both, uh, the owners as well as the seizing agency. We went to many, many events around the community. These are just a few. Um, and also hosted fun events, like we did a crafting for animals event, family-friendly event. And so you can see here, um, that is one of our volunteers that came to help out at the crafting event. And some of them also got to have some puppy snuggles while they were there making toys. Some other great programs that we've had, so one of the things that we created in 2023 was a positive outcomes coordinator position. This was a brand-new position to Animal Services. And really, the main focus was all positive outcomes when it comes to animals. Positive outcomes being, these are more behind the scenes. Like, adoption is a positive outcome, but some other ways that animals can leave our shelter, um, alive, for lack of a better term, is through having lots of foster care, um, foster parents throughout our system to help care for animals when we're full. Uh, a community, a big, a vibrant community cat program that includes trap neuter, vaccinate, and returning cats into their community, as well as building relationships with our transfer partners to transfer animals out of our systems into shelters that have higher adoption rates or what we call destination shelters. Uh, Seattle Humane would be a perfect example of one of those shelters that we partner with. And so as you can see, um, we substantially doubled the amount of animals in foster from 2022 to 2023, um, including increased activity of foster homes. Um, and the majority of our fosters, I will point out, are cat fosters, and usually they're underage kittens or neonates that go into foster. We still have a high, um, very high need for fosters that specialize or want to foster large dogs. Uh, they are now our most vulnerable population, where for years it was actually cats, and a lot of advocacy went behind, and programming went behind to saving the lives of cats who were considered vulnerable animals within our facilities. And now it is actually flip-flopped because of COVID. Um, and we have a harder time getting large dogs adopted, and they sit for longer. And so we also had a really exciting, um, increase in our transfer program. We saw a decrease when COVID happened. We went from having over 1,100 transfers every year to shelters and rescues, to having it drop to 100 during COVID. Um, and as you can imagine, that is really hard for a shelter when we're trying to think about moving animals out of the system. Um, and so with us focusing and having a positive outcomes coordinator to focus on that programming, we were able to build relationships, um, and we were able to move more animals into rescue agencies and other shelters. And one of our other, um, accomplishments that I'm very excited for, and I've talked to Olympia City Council about this before, is our community cat program. So a lot of people recognize this as trap neuter return or trap vaccinate return. Um, and this is where, um, healthy cats are returned back into the community that they belong in. So instead of, um, animals coming into the shelter that have a high likelihood of euthanasia, they're feral. Um, they were out of space. Um, other realistic things to look at, too, um, we're now returning those cats back into the community that they belong. Studies have shown that just because you see a cat does not mean that it has an owner, or in some cases, which is why we call them community cats, multiple owners. Um, from my own personal experience of where I thought I was, you know, the savior and only caretaker of my cat colony in Arizona, turns out, there is five other homes down across the, like, all down the street taking care of the same cats. And they all had different names depending on what house they belonged to. So this is recognizing that they truly are community cats, um, and that they belong back into their community. And their caregivers miss them when they go. And so this allows us to help support community cat caregivers, give them spay neuter, vaccinate, um, and make sure those cats are staying in the community that they belong, rather than being euthanized in a shelter because they had, were not an adoption candidate. Um, other accomplishments, um, we did move to 24/7, um, emergency response. And so you can, after hours, call the shelter, and you will get, if it's an emergency, one of our FSOs, um, to handle. That's including supportive law enforcement, um, injured animals, and there's a couple other items that are considered emergencies. We'll also walk you through and make contact, um, if something happens in the middle of the night, uh, things like that. And so we're proud to offer that support. Um, we also did, after COVID, we had some staffing struggles that we really had to work through like everybody else. Um, hiring was really difficult. And hiring for our FSOs, which is our field service officers, a lot of people know them as animal control officers, but we don't like the term "animal control", so they're field service officers. We were using outdated hiring practices when it came to hiring FSOs. And so we reevaluated that process, um, to look at what was truly needed and found that we were really putting up our own barriers to hiring really great people, um, to work with the community out in the field, um, and to respond to complaints out into the community. And so when we did that, it really changed the game, and we are fully staffed, um, and have been fully staffed for most of the year. Um, I am gonna go back for one sec because one of the things, because we were not fully staffed, uh, for two years solid, with sometimes only having two field service officers at one time servicing the entire county, uh, we recognized that that did create some delays in service. And so for two years, we offered a rebate to all of our partner jurisdictions, in acknowledgement that we weren't fully staffed as promised. And so you can see the portions that were rebated, um, into the budget, um, for the City of Olympia's contribution. Oh, we also worked out, we discovered that there was a gap in service when people called TCOM. Um, so one of the things that we worked through, what was happening is we're not connected to TCOM. So we're not considered a first responder, um, in accordance to those policies. And so what was happening is people would call 911 in an emergency, right? They get bit, there's a dog attack, you know, emergency services need to be called, there's an ambulance. But when it came to them contacting us, we're not part of that chain. And so what would be happen is they'd go call Animal Services. Well, that's not really a great solution for somebody in that service. So we worked with TCOM, and we're now one of their transfer buttons. So if somebody calls Emergency Services, they can transfer their call to us, um, again, regardless of the time of day, to really help bridge that gap where we were seeing, um, that gap in service. And so some of our programming, um, we had 249 volunteers last year. And so you can see that that equivated into almost four full-time staff members, into the number of volunteers that helped us. And we genuinely could not do what we do without our volunteers. We have 22 staff, uh, 3,000 animals, and it is not enough staff to get everything done in a single day. And so because of that, we're very dependent on the volunteers that come in and help us do laundry, make packs for surgery, walk dogs, help with adoption counseling, uh, welcome people, uh, in the lobby to greet and direct them where they need to go. Without our volunteers, uh, we would not be able to do the programming that we do. Some of our other programs include, we work with Thurston County Humane Society, as well as SNAP, which is Spay Neuter Assistance Program, to hand out roughly between 700 and 900 vouchers to pay for low-income spay neuter in the community. I will tell you that this is not enough. Um, we get vouchers at the beginning of every month. They're gone in two days. Um, so we roughly get anywhere between 30 and 70, depending on the amount of money that those agencies have. Um, and there's a line around the building at the first of every month when we get new vouchers. Low-cost spay neuter, um, is a need, a great need in this area. And one day, I hope that there will be a solution. But until then, we partner with other agencies to provide that for the community. Roof Over Rover, which is really great, uh, we have donated dog houses that a lot of times are utilized most by our field service officers. They go out on an animal welfare call, uh, usually because the animal has no shelter. The animal has no shelter most likely because the owner cannot buy it. Um, and so we have dog houses that we provide, um, when we go out on those calls. Because the whole idea of us, when we think about field service and responding to calls, is we want to respond once. We don't want to keep coming out, so we try to think very solutions-oriented. And if we don't have to come out because we gave you a dog house and your dog has shelter, problem solved. We also work really hard on our reunification programs and work with technology to reunite, um, owners. We have online lost and found reporting 24/7. We have a Facebook page, um, that posts all of our lost and found animals within the community. Um, and we work with the lost and found community that's on social media to help get a lot of these animals home before they even hit shelter doors. We've also really worked at our owner surrender and rehoming services. So, um, prior to us taking a more holistic approach, so we have a survey, we have owners, owners make appointments for surrender, and we really go about this in an approach to help them. Like, why are you surrendering? Is it a medical issue? Is it a behavior issue? Is it a housing issue? Um, and since we've provided this more holistic repot, approach, along with providing resources for them to try to rehome their animal, um, you know, working with them so that we're not the first solution, we're the last solution. Um, we want to be the last solution and really be the place where the animals who truly have no other place to go, those are the ones that we want. So if we can help you rehome your animal through additional websites and additional ways of trying, that's what we're for. And we've actually reduced our owner, um, intake, uh, by surrender from 41 to 24 by using this holistic approach. So they are not, um, we were, almost a half of our entire intake, um, in 2019 was owner surrenders. Statistics, I'll try not to bore you with this. Um, but as you can see, uh, because of that approach, owner surrenders are quite lower. But you can see from 2021, 2022, and 2023, our intake numbers, we experienced a 20% increase in intake last year. Um, a lot of those had to do with several cases, um, five of which were, uh, hoarding cases. Um, hoarding meaning people who had, uh, a collection of too many pets. So anywhere from 50 cats up to one case that had 157 cats in their home. We also, ha, our intakes break down. As you can see, the majority are still of our intakes are cats, followed by dogs. Um, with some other, other is usually pocket pets, guinea pigs, uh, occasional bird, um, things like that. And then some wildlife. And most of the wildlife is usually orphaned animals, such as baby raccoons or opossums. Adoptions, um, like everything else, adoptions continue to go up, um, every year. And as you can see, uh, we also are, positive outcomes as a whole increased by 35%. Um, so where you see total LO, that's total live outcome. Um, so that includes adoption, transfer, and return to owner. Field response. So we did have an overall increase of about 11% for our animal control officers responding to, with Olympia seeing the highest increase at almost 23%. Um, so you can see, year over year, from 2021 to 2023, where the increase has and the number of calls that we have done. Calls include anything from a barking complaint, um, to a welfare check, to possible cruelty or neglect. So it's the entire gamut of having anything to do with animals. Bites, rabies quarantine, um, declarations of dangerous dogs or potential, potentially dangerous dogs. Um, and one of the top calls for Olympia is actually during this time of year, which is dogs that are contained in hot, hot vehicles. So just again, to talk about some of the cases that we went on, um, this was the 157 cats that I was talking about in April that came from a single household. Uh, we did not, in this case, pursue any charges because, um, the owner in question came to us seeking help. Um, she realized she was in over her head, and what had started as trying to help strays in her neighborhood quickly grew out of proportion with a lack of access to low-cost spay neuter. Um, conditions were not great, as you can see. Um, but we were able to place 100 of those cats into other shelters and rescues within that first week, um, as well as put the rest up for adoption. So we only had a couple of cats that were so sick, um, that the best decision to make was to be for euthanizing them. But 154 of those cats had positive outcomes. This is one that I like to talk about, um, mainly because we just, ironically, uh, what started in, on August 8th of 2023, um, sentencing just took place in August 8th of 2024, a year later, um, of this case. And the individual in question, who we went out on a suspected cockfighting case out in unincorporated Thurston County. He pled to one count of Class C felony for animal fighting, and one count, uh, for Class B felony in animal cruelty for mutilation. And so we took in 64 chickens, six, um, 40 of which were roosters that had all been dubbed, meaning their combs and wattles have been cut off, um, as well as their spurs, which, uh, for roosters, that's one of their, it's an extra claw at the back. But they had all been altered, um, and done in a way that either additional attachments could be put on or that the spurs themselves could be used to cause more injury. And so we worked with Deputy Burton Crowe, now Detective Burton Crowe, with TCSO on this case. And so we housed these chickens for almost a month. Uh, we were one of the first to test out HB 1234 when it came to new seizure laws and the rights of shelters and animals with housing as well. And again, I want to point out that of these 64 chickens, 62 had positive outcomes. And that's thanks to Rooster House Rescue up in Fall City, who worked with us, um, helping to make sure we were providing correct care to the roosters and chickens in this case, as well as helping find placement for all of them. Um, so it definitely tapes teamwork, um, and we can't be the only one sometimes making sure that these animals are getting the care that they need. Reagan is another great example. So, the individual who had Reagan, um, was keeping her, uh, in a crate filled with feces. She was never out. He surrendered her to us, but turns out, um, Reagan was also part of a domestic violence issue that was going on. And her original owner, who was still several states away, realized her original mom, Reagan, was taken from her when, um, this individual moved for other reasons having to do with domestic violence. So, um, her original owner, her mom actually drove, like, found out she was here and drove 48 hours straight to come pick her up so that she could be reunited with her. So, these are just some of the cases that we dealt with last year and are continuing to have some similar cases this year as well. So it's, it's one of those that sometimes, this is the work that you don't see, and that's why I like to talk about it, because these are cases. These are active cases that, um, you know, we don't like putting on social media because it could alter the outcome. And we wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And so these are the ones we can share because they have come to conclusion. But we are doing the work. It's just sometimes not as publicized as other people on the work that we do. We also, we also, I laugh, we had, um, 2023 was a big one. Uh, we had a massive sewer repair that needed to happen that tore up half the floor in the shelter, um, to be repaired. We, our building's aging. It's a fact. Uh, most of the city council members, you have come for a tour to see the building. Um, the pipes that were replaced were original cast iron from 1974 when the building was built, which obviously with animal feces and chemical agents, uh, did not hold up, up to the test of time. Uh, we also had to replace the original kennels in dog adoption. Uh, they had been in there for 20 years, uh, just to kind of give, 26 years, to give everybody an idea. You should technically replace them after 10, maybe 15 at the most. Um, but we do now have new dog adoption kennels as well, uh, which is fantastic because when we finally pulled them all out, um, they were getting ready to rot out from underneath anyway. So, glad we made that decision. Because of that, I'm leading into, and I won't take too much of everybody's time on this, but we did do a capital facilities plan that did label us the second worst building in the City of Lacey. Um, our programic needs, staffing needs- Our programic needs, staffing needs, servicing needs do not match the current facility that we're in, and it's unsafe. And so we are in the middle of doing a space needs assessment with Animal Arts, looking at what the future will hold. So looking at not only what the next five years could possibly bring us, but in the next 25 years, and planning for a building of what that looks like to service the community. And so this also includes not just housing animals, but programs for the community to prevent animals from coming in and making sure that we're supporting animals in the homes that they are at, because that is where they belong. Some of the things, we've been getting lots of questions and lots of suggestions, is where are we going to build this new facility? And so we have had, we look at a lot of parameters to building this new building. And when I say owned by Jazzcom Partners, this also included, we talked to Olympia School District, for example, we talked to the Port of Olympia. We talked to a lot of partners who perhaps maybe had extra land that would be up for sale, maybe not now, but in the future, as part of our discussion. And so there's lots of pros and cons, suggestions going that we should go maybe more South County, North County, like where should we be? So there's lots of pros and cons. I won't hold to that, but what I will go through is to show you the zip codes where we have the highest intake, as well as, when you look at some of the suggestions, we did this map because there was a lot of suggestions to move to Grand Mound area. When you do this, this is our service call area. So over 60% of our calls are actually in the green outline, which is why we're looking in that general facility for vicinity for a new building. And with that, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Sarah. Any questions or comments, Council? Councilmember Partially.
Just a comment. I've, I've said this before, and you've heard it, but I've been on Jazzcom from before Sarah got here, and she's really made us a class act organization, and I think she's going to be the person we need to take into the future. For example, when we were, before we hired her, we did not know we were running out of reserves. Our budget was being leveled off by the reserves we had, and we, we were very dangerously close to losing all of our reserves. And it was Sarah and the city of Lacey staff member that figured this out and right-sized our budget, just to go from there. Not only that, but the humanity of how we're caring for our pets and our animals in the shelter and in the foster care is amazing. So I just want to shout her praises and let the community know we've got a gold member right over there.
Thank you, Lisa.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Great. Sarah, thank you for the report, and I'm, I'm especially excited to hear about the Community Cat Program that this last year, it really sort of fully launched.
It did. The addition of our shelter vet is what really.
More capacity to do the spay and neuter.
Correct.
Okay, great. Well, that, it's, that's wonderful news, and it makes me wonder, I know we sort of emphasize the pet welfare, life outcome side, but you're also the county animal control agency. So is there an ecological sort of lens? Do you look at populate, do you have population of feral cats, deer, things like that? I mean, is there any estimates of how many, how many cats are in Thurston County or in the three cities?
No. There probably are calculators that I can utilize to answer that question. It's a joking rule of thumb, but also a very accurate rule of thumb. For every one cat you see, you can multiply that by three that you're not seeing. And I mean, and that apply, like, that applies to feral cat colonies or cats that you're seeing in your neighborhood, if you count how many that you have, multiply that by three, and that's probably a more realistic idea of how many cats are in your neighborhood. And that even played into the 157 cats. We were originally told there was 50.
Oh my.
And so that has become kind of one of those rules of thumb, of just thinking about, you know, looking at what, what's hidden, right? Like, just because you see it doesn't mean it's the, that's the only cat there. There's more likely other cats in the neighborhood that are either being cared for by other people or not. So that's one thing to think about, but I do not have an accurate estimate of the amount of feral cats we currently have.
Sure, so I'm, I'm pleased for the Community Cat effort, and then I wonder how we'll know when we're winning. You know, but I suppose it's, it's fairly anecdotal or complaint-based.
Yes and no. I mean, it is data-driven in the sense of the more active we become with these spay-neuter initiatives, regardless of whether they're Community Cat or low-income spay-neuter, we should see a drop in those numbers coming into our intake. So the more we have a Community Cat program, I should be seeing less and less animals coming in, or I should say, less cats coming in over time, as well as less kittens coming in. And kittens are one of those deciding factors. So between, you know, community education about leaving kittens where they're at and making sure mom is around before Good Samaritans bring them to us, and making sure we're combining that with a really strong spay-neuter, over time, you will see that difference. I was an executive director in a rural community in Arizona, and we had a very active, low-cost spay-neuter program where we had 100,000 that we were investing into this community to pay for low-income spay-neuter. And we went from getting 100, 150 puppies a year to maybe getting 10, and that's what tells me that it's working.
Thank you. That's very helpful, and I'm very hopeful about the program.
Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Thanks for being here. I really appreciate your annual updates to us. And it was funny, as you were like describing Community Cats, like going around the neighborhood, you know, I realized that I actually have a Community Cat. She knows where she gets fed. I don't really know where she sleeps. I actually got a text from my neighbor just a few minutes ago saying, "I haven't seen your cat in a few days. Is she okay?" But she, she has her beautiful, colorful bird collar that she wears, so she's very recognizable, and she has friends all over the neighborhood, and she goes and visits all of them. So different kind of Community Cat. And I also, you know, that story that you told about the situation with the chickens and the roosters, that's just terrible. That is so terrible, and I just want to thank you for being well-positioned to address that, that issue of animal cruelty, and I'm really glad that, that that was able to be resolved. So thanks for your work on that. I do have a question around the, the, the next facility that you need. So it sounds like there's been a lot of assessment in terms of like where it should go, what possible parcels are there, but what's the next step? Like, are you honing in on a piece of land? Maybe you can't say yet because it's a real estate transaction, but like, you know, what, what comes next and how can we help?
So what comes next? It's multifaceted answer in that approach. We could have the possibility of moving forward with the site, but where we're at right now is we have two things simultaneously going on. Working on the space needs assessment so that we can actually have renderings to show partnering jurisdictions what this facility may look like, right? And talking about the programs and staffing and all of that to, I don't want to say garner buy-in and support, but to get everybody on board that a new facility is what is needed. But we also can't move forward with purchasing a parcel or move forward in some of these next steps without having full commitment from all of our partner jurisdictions. And so that's where we're at. We're starting to have talks with staff of the different jurisdictions, talking about what the potential cost would be, and that's part of what the space assessment is going to be. The capital facilities plan gave us this very arching, very broad span of like 20 to 30 million. That's a big span, right? And so we brought in specialists that can actually, who build shelters, that is their specialty, that can actually hone in on what the true costs and the size of facility that we need. But again, the point that we're at is we're going to come to a time that we aren't going to be able to move further in the process until all of the jurisdictions are on board and are bought into the process and agree to the financial commitment of moving forward. And so we're getting very, very close to, I would say, in about the next year, we are going to need to have that commitment in order for us to continue to move forward in planning this new facility.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Please let, let us know what we can do to help in that regard. This is such an essential service for our community, and I imagine it's a very delicate process to navigate all the jurisdictions. All of us have all these competing priorities, and so I, I imagine that is a, that is a tough job. But I, I think, you know, I think we all value the, the role that you all play for the community, so, you know, let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you. And just additionally to the side note about the cockfighting case, I am really proud of my staff and the way that they handled the entire process, including care. And this is one of four or five cases in the state that I actively know about, and I can tell you for sure that not all cases were handled as well, or as humanely as our team handled this case.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Thank you for coming out and giving this update. I would love to do a tour in the future. You know, the work, seeing the work that you guys are doing is, is both, it both saddens me because I'm going to go home and hug my, my orange boys, but I'm also, I'm glad that you guys are doing this work. I'm glad that there's, there's more than just shelter, but there's also legal cases happening. I'm glad that you, that there's this compassion to try to work through these problems as, as I wouldn't be able to do it because I would just be sad all the time. I just couldn't do it. I mean, I really do appreciate the work. You know, my question, though, has to do with vulnerability, and you mentioned large dogs. You know, I'm, I'm wondering what else can we do as a city regarding that? You know, I think about the fact that, you know, majority of the city is now renters. There's a lot of restrictions on large dogs. There's a restriction on how many pets you can have. I'm not saying that we should open it all the way up, but I'm very curious about, you know, your, your thoughts on what we can do to kind of address some of that problem.
No, I completely agree with you on that. That is, we are, the housing crisis in and of itself is one of the major factors that are playing into our intake, that and the lack of access to veterinary care. And affordable housing, one, but also pet-friendly housing. There, a lot of the requirements that are put onto renters for the pets that they own, what they're allowed to have and what they aren't allowed to have, aren't based in science or fact as to what is the appropriate animal to have there. It really should be based on behavior, meeting some of those requirements rather than breed-specific. Because I can tell you, in some cases, don't get me wrong, I have cats, love cats, adore cats. But I would argue that, you know, a lot of these apartment complexes allow for cats and not dogs, when in actuality, cats probably are more likely to destroy parts of the apartment than a large dog would, right?
Exactly.
And so the, the way the city of Olympia could support that would really be to work with me, work with, I've been working with the ASPCA's legislative team on a state level to look at pet-including housing initiatives that really don't look at species or breeds so much as other restrictions that could be provided, such as, you know, behavior and other items that you look at. And I think that would be one of the best ways to support that, because then we would be able to place large breed dogs in a variety of housing that isn't just houses that are owned.
I, I look forward to legislation around that. I really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Partially.
Just so, because Councilmember Madron's question was really good. What was the expected ability to occupy the current building time-wise without substantial financial input?
We have five years left, and even that five years, we'll have to invest $1.2 million to stay operational. And so it is a sinking ship that we keep putting money into.
Mayor Proton Wayne.
Thank you for your presentation. As, as you were talking, I was looking up Joint Animal Services, and I was one of the ones that really wanted to go on a tour, and by the time we put the poll out, well, my date didn't win, and your photo coming up. I've actually spent a lot of years of my childhood going to Joint Animal Service, almost like a zoo, a more humane zoo. But yeah, and also thank you for saying what you can about your planning processes. And yeah, absolutely, you want to garner buy-in and support, absolutely. So maybe, maybe bring some pets with you. But this is.
Duly noted for next meeting.
This is not a, a question that I expect you to answer unless you have one, but just something for you to know that I would be curious about as soon as our city manager or one of, you know, maybe, maybe Councilmember Partially or whoever would be on Joint Animal Services would bring any sort of ask, I would want to know, well, what's our responsibility as Olympia, and how is that, is it just all the jurisdictions, you know, paying the same amount, or is it by capacity use? So just some, just some food for thought.
We are in alignment in your thought process.
Okay. And also very, very interested in seeing and supporting, you know, what could be. So clearly you all do a lot. Thank you. Oh, also, I found Cluck Norris.
Yes.
Yes, a rooster named Cluck Norris. I love that.
Yes. Yes, he is, roosters are also some of the most abused and abandoned animals in the country. And so we have three stray roosters, most likely abandoned or dumped somewhere, that are currently up for adoption. Roosters do make really great pets. They make great house roosters, just in case anybody wanted to know. Our cockfighting case roosters, some actually live in houses now in our pets. But they're also great caretakers for your flock and take care of their ladies and protect them from predators. We also are doing an adoption special all week, just as a quick plug. So we're doing free adoptions for all animals in our facility. So adoptions are sponsored and paid for by Best Friends Animal Society, and that includes Cluck Norris.
Does that mean that, Councilmember Gilman loves that one. So when, when you say free adoption, I love that plug. When you say free adoption, there's some upfront costs as well with that, right? And so.
Free, the only thing that is not covered in this would be your license.
Oh, sure, sure.
But everything is fully covered by Best Friends. That's the only expense that an individual would be paying to come adopt. We have limited it so to one free dog adoption, two free cat adoptions, but honestly, take all the critters you want, and that includes Cluck Norris and Prince Featherington.
Love that. Thank you. I always appreciate your presentations, and, I mean, we had a great sort of lineup tonight, if you will, but I don't know, there's something about animals where it just lifts you up and spreads joy, so thanks for the work you do.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just had to add that it's actually not, you're not allowed to have a rooster in Olympia city limits.
It's true.
Yeah, so that might be the reason that you see so many of them get dropped off there, because people get their little baby chicks from Eastside Urban Farm and Garden, and then if one turns into a rooster, they're actually not permitted to keep it, so.
That is correct.
Yeah, so we are working on updating some of our code around urban agriculture. I don't know how popular it would be in the community to allow roosters, but it is something that we could consider. You know, Robert was just talking about what are the own barriers that we create that make challenges for you, and it sounds like that's one of them, but just some food for thought for us.
Also, food for thought, Olympia has a, has a pet limit in their municipal code. So technically, city of Olympia only allows an individual to own three pets if you live in the city limits.
Not including chickens.
Correct.
Yeah, so some things for us to think about as, in terms of how we can help lighten the load for Joint Animal Services.
And we're more than happy to suggest language of any of the municipal code and help with a review of all of the animal code to update it to more progressive practices.
Cool.
Thank you.
All right. Well, everybody stole all of my questions via tele. Well, everybody stole all of my questions via telepathy, apparently. So my questions were gonna be about our code and what barriers might exist, because I distinctly remember having that conversation when we visited the shelter. And so I was gonna ask about an update or a follow-up on what are those things. So I'd be, I would appreciate if you have any thoughts about that, if you could send it our way, we would appreciate that. And obviously, my questions were also around the facility, which we answered. So, just gratitude to you for the work that you do and we appreciate you coming and giving an update on the status of a place that is very, very important for members of our community and for the animals that are there. And so, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Good night. All right, so that takes us to our next business item this evening, actually our last business item for the evening, which is Item 6C, Approval of Bid Award and Resolutions Required for the Phones Road Improvement Project. And here presenting this evening is Jim Rio, our project manager from, with our Public Works Engineering.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jim Rio. As the mayor said, I am a project manager in our Public Works Engineering Department. And I just want to say that I am truly, I am truly pleased and privileged to bring this issue before you this evening. I could not find, in preparation for this presentation, the date that this project entered our capital facilities plan, but I'm pretty confident in saying it's been here for over 20 years.
Wow.
So this has been on the city's to-do list for over 20 years. That was my line, sorry, I forgot it. So on behalf of all of the people who have contributed to bring us to this milestone, I truly want to thank you for giving us some time to share some information about the project. Now, what we're asking of you this evening is to make a decision on four proposed motions. And I'll speak to those in a little bit more detail at the end of my presentation, but the bulk of what I'm gonna share with you is really information about the project and the efforts that the city staff are going to engage in to keep our public informed about what could be some fairly significant impacts. It's a big project. Pardon me, getting used to my tools. So what I'm gonna share with you this afternoon is, excuse me, this afternoon, this evening, is a few of the key elements of the project that we're gonna be delivering for our community. I'm gonna touch on the cost and funding of this particular project. I'll share with you a very high overview of the project construction schedule. And then I'll talk a bit about the efforts that the project team has been and will be engaged in on the areas of public outreach. And then after that, what we're gonna do is I'll touch on the four resolutions that you'll be considering after you have the opportunity to ask me some questions, I hope. I thought I'd use some renderings of the project. I'm gonna go through three renderings of the project, because as we enter into these efforts, which can often be difficult, I like to tell my team to keep your eyes on where we're going, not the challenge directly in front of us. So to kind of orient you for this slide, I've looked at it literally dozens of times, but I realize you may not be immediately placing yourself out there on Phones Road. So where we are is, we're just immediately north of the future trail crossing at the Woodland Trail, looking south down Phones Road towards 18th Avenue. One thing I want to highlight about this project is unlike other transportation projects that I've been involved with, this project has its primary focus on increasing the safety for everyone that uses this corridor. Motives, pedestrians, bicyclists, people that are using wheelchairs, that is the primary focus. We, it has been designed to meet Growth Management Act requirements for capacity, but it is not going to be creating another speed corridor in the City of Olympia. It's more about safe passage of everyone through this corridor. This particular slide highlights what I think is one of the most important features of the project, which is the improved crossing at the Woodland Trail. So just to kind of highlight a few of the key elements that are gonna make this a much improved crossing for our citizens, the lighter pavement that you see there is actually concrete and one of the most important features of that concrete, it's gonna be a raised intersection. So this intersection will act effectively like as a speed bump, beginning to slow traffic as they enter the corridor. Other elements, you'll see a pedestrian island that provides refuges for pedestrians that are crossing, a real refuge, not what we see out there today. Improved signage and lighting and the temporary rectangular rapid flashing beacons will be permanent installations at this location. The other thing that doesn't jump off the page, what was very critical for me as I was working with the design team, is to improve the sight distance at this location, so that what we'll see in the future is a better opportunity for morrow wrist to observe pedestrians and bicyclists that are starting to enter the roadway. Right now, sometimes it feels like you're kind of jumping out there, if any of you've ever used the trail, which I use on almost a daily basis. Moving a little bit further south down the corridor, this particular slide, I think, does a good job of showing the next feature that I'm particularly pleased with being associated with, and that's the separated bike and bike lanes and sidewalk. So you'll see that we'll have, when you're moving down the roadway in a car, you'll, to your right, you'll have a six-inch curb, a planter strip, and then you'll have a bike lane, a five-foot bike lane, and then a full seven-foot sidewalk. And this is going to extend from the Woodland Trail all the way to the southern limits of the projects where they'll transition into the existing more traditional sidewalk and bike facilities at the south end of the project. My last slide takes us down a little bit further. We're now a little bit north of the south entrance of Home Depot and you're entering and you're looking at what stands out prominently in this particular rendition is the pedestrian refuge island that begins to be part of the new compact roundabout that's gonna be installed at the south, south entrance to Home Depot. The primary function of, or the, what I would say highlights about this particular feature is that it's gonna slow traffic down while maintaining a relatively smooth and continuous traffic flow through that intersection. This is, it's poorly shown, but kind of at the end there, that's the compact roundabout. And what I wanted to highlight is like, it's a compact roundabout. It's what, it's similar to what you see at the intersection of Henderson and Carleone, not the full-size roundabout that you see at the end of this road. So a smaller feature, but we think it's gonna be quite effective for achieving the safety objectives of this project. So I apologize for the busyness of this particular slide, but I did want to show you some detail on how the costs are broken down and associated with this, with this project. And I really wanted to highlight the funding, all the different pieces of the funding package that's been pulled together for this project. So it's a $24.5 million project and if you were to kind of go down the lines, and I thought about color coding them, the tops, the top five lines are five separate grants that city staff were successful in being awarded from the Federal Highway Administration. The sixth line is a $2 million grant of state funding from the Transportation Improvement Board. And then the last three, you can see the city's contribution from our capital facilities funds. And it doesn't take you very long to notice that transportation is carrying a fairly heavy burden on this project. What I wanted to add, but didn't want to write down on a slide, you'll see it in your package, annually, the Federal Highway Administration goes through a process of reviewing projects that are under delay. So they look for funds that will not be spent, that were expected to be spent. And then they look for projects that have a funding need. And the term that's being used for that is the redistributed funds. The Thurston Regional Planning Council, working with the City of Olympia staff, we identified $5.2 million of additional need that we could, we could apply those funds to. That, those, the approval of those funds is now pending FHWA approval and FHWA. So we've made it through TRPC screening, we've made it through WashDOT. Matter of fact, they've already updated the State Transportation Improvement Program. Those are the, basically, that's the official paperwork that backs up that funding. So what, the timing of decisions on that will be, I anticipate, we won't know until October. The State of, Washington State Department of Transportation has asked us to have our funding packages ready by the first part of September. And that's why part of what we're asking you to look at this evening is authorizing the city manager to execute those documents so that we can get them into WashDOT on time and be available to receive this additional funding. The number, if I haven't said it, is $5.2 million. So I'd really love to bring that number of $14 million down below $10 million. So that's what we're keeping our fingers crossed for. Yeah, that's pretty exciting. So this is a very high-level overview of the information I have now from our contractor. Knowing this presentation was before me, I kind of forced them to give me their schedule a little early. So they said, here, this is what you got, this is what we're planning. So the timing of this, assuming we move forward from this evening, we'll issue notice to proceed sometime in the middle of September. That doesn't mean the contractor will be out there right away. They're gonna be putting paperwork together to get their early construction items approved for installation on the project. We'll also be using that time to coordinate with private utilities, because they have an important piece of this project. We expect to see them on-site the first or second week of November. They do intend to work through the winter as much as they can. I've done this long enough that I'm skeptical, but we intentionally gave them a rather tight construction deadline. We do that with, by allowing a number of working days. And we knew that we didn't want this dragging out, so we kind of squoze the contractors down quite a bit. The first piece of their work is installing and changing, excuse me, relocating underground facilities, installing new facilities. That work is scheduled to continue until the summer of 2025. Then they'll switch to construction of the roadway and the sidewalks and that's supposed to, that is right now on their schedule to continue through spring of 2026. And actually, it's kind of interesting to look at a two-year schedule and see a paving date with date certain on May 20th, 2026. So it's a very long project. It's the longest project that I've been, in terms of time, that I've been involved with the city. So not only because of the extreme constructed activity, construction activity that we're about to engage in, but this length of time, this is gonna very, have a very high impact on not only the people that live adjacent to the project and are near the project, but because of the importance of Phones Road as a commuter route, the community at large. So for that reason, we've put quite a bit of effort into thoughtfully thinking about how we can use the tools we have available to us to communicate with the public. So through the design and right-of-way acquisition procedure, excuse me, yeah, processes, we've used traditional methods of mailers, a few construction news postings, letting people know that maybe they're gonna see a geotechnical crew out on the site or Puget Sound Energy is gonna be out there for a little while. We've had the opportunity to speak with a couple of groups that have come to us by request, among them, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, who gave us some good information that I'm gonna share with you on the next slide, and one of the homeowners associations. We also took the opportunity to kind of do a door knock as we were approaching, was the end of right-of-way acquisition. We actually walked out, knocked on every door along the corridor to find out who's living there, what are the challenges they're facing, what are the language barriers we might have to think about as we're going forward with the project. And using that information, we've built a pretty much, a pretty robust website. The other thing that goes on during right-of-way negotiations is you get into pretty active discussions with the property owners about what's going on, what their concerns are. And that's really very informative about the questions that we're gonna have to address going forward with the project. From this point forward, we will basically be stepping up that effort. You'll see a little bit more construction news between, coming out, and I know you all subscribe to construction news, so you see a little bit more information about upcoming activities as we approach mobilizing the contractor. One of the things that we have planned for the future, we haven't got the date set, but sometime around the end of September, beginning of October, we'll be holding a virtual presentation and Q and A session. Information, pretty much the level that you're getting, but really the point of it is to see, listening to the community and see what they have to say about their concerns for us. Another effort that the communication team has decided is important is to get out to the apartment complexes, the mobile, and the mobile home park on the corridor and meet those people kind of where they are, in very small sort of mini meetings, low intensity, talk to them about the project. One of the things that we were thinking about is, yes, you've talked to a property owner, maybe some management personnel at this apartment complex, but do the residents actually have any idea what's going on and do we, can we get some information about their concerns are and what their needs are? Again, we'll be using traditional methods, construction news, what we think is a fairly robust website, which we're gonna try to keep as more of an updated and active place where you can go and find out what's going on this week or next week than you might see on other projects. And that kind of describes what we'll be engaged in from now until the project, until the contractor mobilizes. Once the contractor mobilizes, all of our communications kind of focus on the weekly construction meetings. So every week, we get together with the contractor and say, well, what's happening in the next two or three weeks? And having that information, we can then put that information out if we think it's necessary to tell the public, look, this is, this is what's going on, this is what you can expect. So at the beginning of the project, I hope that'll probably, actually, you'll probably start seeing things on a weekly basis. Those will also feed updates to our website. And then the interesting discussion that's been going on is between the project team and our communication staff, is how to strategically push things out through social media where you get a little bit more of an active engagement of people than just hoping that they plug into our websites. I always put email up there because there is a certain sector of people on any, any project that are not gonna sign up for any of this, but want to be informed about what's going on. So we've got a very robust email distribution list that we'll be using to sort of share all of these updates through all of those that we generate, really coming from that weekly construction meeting. The, I'm gonna refer back to that BPAC meeting. One of the strongest messages we got talking about with BPAC is, was in response to the question of, what's the best way to get to the people that are using the Woodland Trail when we know that there's gonna be a severe impact? And what I mean by the severe impact is, you're not gonna get through at Phones Road. If you, those of you that use the trail, we've analyzed, well, what are the alternative routes? It's a little bit, it's not intuitive, it's not bad, if you've done it a couple times, I have in both directions, but it's, you'd have to know what you're doing. So the important thing is, and what they told us was, on-trail signage. Put a sign on the trail. We piloted that on the Boulevard Road Trail Crossing Project, got some good feedback, learned some lessons, think we can do better this time. But that's something, we haven't quite, you know, mapped that all out, but that's one of, I think, the key pieces, because I don't anticipate that we'll be seeing full closure of the trail often or soon, but someday we're gonna pave that road, someday we're gonna pour concrete on that trail and it'll be down for a while. And what I've learned is, it's very actively used by commuters in this area, more so than I appreciate it. And they're gonna need to know that they're, they're gonna have to make some different decisions, at least for a few days. So the issues before you, there's four motions that we've, we're hoping that you will approve this evening. Generally, the motions are contract award to Pavetta Brothers for construction of the project. We're asking you also to approve a resolution to extend our existing contract with KPG Somas. We hired KPG Somas through a competitive process to provide design for us and we always envisioned they would support us during construction. This is a fairly large contract for construction support, because we made the decision that it was important for us to completely turn the construction management over to a consultant so that we could retain city resources to advance other projects that we need to get done for other utilities. We're also asking you to approve a construction agreement, a construction agreement with Puget Sound Energy. This is kind of a standard practice for whenever you're taking overhead electrical distribution down to underground facilities. There's a, an established, almost boilerplate agreement that we're required to enter into with the Puget Sound Energy that's really governed by decisions made by the utilities, State Utilities and Transportation Commission. Having said that, I don't want to sound like something's being forced upon us. We engaged, we've engaged with Puget Sound Energy since the beginning of design, developing sort of the project-specific elements of that agreement are fully collaborative and negotiated over the course of the several years of design. And then finally, happily, that's all spending money, we're gonna ask you to authorize the city manager to accept additional grant monies from the Federal Highway Administration, should they be offered to us. What we wanted to do, since there's a lot there, is give you the exact wording, so we're just gonna leave, I'm just gonna leave that up there, I'm not gonna read it as much as I'm sure you'd like me to. But at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments or advice you might have for us as we hopefully engage and move forward with the construction of this project.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions from the dais? All right. Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Gilman, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
This sort of comes when putting on my finance hat. I saw the fourteen point seven, by the way, thank you for the grant and the work on that. We appreciate that. Is there any portion of this, what might be hopefully eight million afterwards, if we get the grant, if I do my math quickly, that could be coming out of our new transportation sales tax? Because that is supposed to be fenced off for active transportation, and you're doing, separated from traffic, bike lanes and pedestrian lanes. And I'm just wondering, is that going to be possible? No? Okay.
Thank you. I was going to say, this is terrible that I'm going to defer to the, my first question to the Public Works Director because I don't know the answer to that question.
Because I don't know how that, you know, the first year of those monies coming in, and any debt service we can reduce, that's all I'm thinking.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Mark Russell, Public Works Director. Let me think how I answer that question. We've been planning for this for a number of years, so at this point in time, there is none of that new money in this project. We've been using impact fees, voted utility tax for the sidewalk was the mechanism we had to pay for that. So at this point in time, we're not planning on using, and we have not set aside any of the money from the new sales tax from the Transportation Benefit District. It's all from other existing funds that, that we've been actually spending. Some of that fourteen million has been already spent on design and right-of-way to match the grants we've had for that as well, so. Does that answer your question?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, do you mind if I just follow up?
Sure.
When we passed the Transportation Benefit District sales tax, the goal of it was to not have it go to large projects like this, but to be able to address the smaller standalone projects that we've been unable to get to. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I think that's only generating about three million extra dollars, right? So, yeah. Okay. So Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Jim, you piqued my interest talking about the, the trail and the Woodland Trail and what, so what is the alternative route? Is it the I, what's left of the I-5 trail, or is it sending people out to the streets?
I hate to, to, to have to admit, it's your section option, your second option. The, I think, I think the best route that I would feel comfortable sending people to is to, let's say you're coming east from, from Lacey. We would have signage at the Bicycle Roundabout directing you onto the Hales Weston Trail, and then essentially, that, that's where a little bit of the challenge is, if you're not familiar with how to navigate down through the Thurston County Park and get out to Eighteenth Avenue, you have pretty good bike lanes. And I've actually rode, rode them a couple times during, to, to see if I felt comfortable sending people there. That to get to Boulevard, because really your, your best access point, maybe, what I would say your easiest access point, and sort of hills and complexity, is to go to Boulevard, turn north on a Boulevard and pick up the trail at the new access point that we constructed, that we're just finishing construction on. So that, that we're, I, actually, I just asked for that map from our communications consultant this morning, and so that's where we'd be telling people to go. So the I-5 trail is not a particularly desirable trail, to be perfectly honest with you. You've got heavy tree routes, you have a challenge crossing Pacific, and then if you're heading out towards, if you're heading in that direction, I think you can see where I'm going, the usage by homeless makes that very difficult to keep clean.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Jim. I, I know that's a little bit of a bunny hole, but you piqued my interest when you're saying, when we close the crossing.
Yeah, it's, it's been a, a subject of great thought and discussion.
Well, congratulations on getting to this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you, Jim. Boy, it's a long time coming. It's, it's exciting. I, I was trying to think of when I first heard of it, and it was already an active project, project when I sat down on City Council. So I drive the corridor regularly, and I'm, it's, it's exciting to see those safety improvements and the visibility improvements in your renderings. The thing that jumped out at me in your rendering is that there's no roundabout on the north end. And I'm just curious if that's a future plan on Pacific, or was that considered as part of this project?
It was never considered part of this project, but it was, it was suggested a lot. It was really the scope of the project and the cost of the project.
Because it's such a different road than Phones Road.
Yeah. It's, it's, it'll be a project of similar magnitude when it is taken up, and I'd have to go back and review the transportation improvement plan.
That's plenty. And, like, so that roundabout would cost as much as this project?
I, I, I don't know if it'll be that much, but, because this is such a huge project.
Right. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. It's exciting.
Mayor Protem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Hey, Jim, I just wanted to take a moment to lift you and your team up, and really by extension, the Public Works Director, right? Wow, what a great presentation. And, yeah, so well put together, that slide that you actually called busy. I've been in some busy, you know, sitting audience of some really busy presentations where people just fly through it really fast, and it's like, anyways, really polished stuff. And I haven't been here for, for that amount of time that you, you and others have been kind of shepherding this along and, and hoping to move it from to-do to done. So I think that we're all probably really filled with gratitude here for, for what a big deal this is. And I can sort of, you know, hear it in your voice about like how proud you are and the magnitude of it. And, and I love picturing you on that trail with the bike, like, hmm, where are we going to go? Where are we sending them? You know, what, this commitment? So I don't have any questions, I just wanted to just kind of be here in this moment with you. So thank you so much. A lot of great work.
Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yes, a lot of, a lot of good work. You know, I'm glad that this is moving forward. I mean, I've, when I found out about the project, when I packed, when I was on BPAC, I went out there to try to ride my e-bike down that street, not recommended. It is, it is frankly a very unsafe street as it is now. I'm glad we're getting those improvements done. I'm, I'm glad that we're seeing speed reduction through design as a factor, rather than just putting signs up or having OPD have another officer posted. It's really good to see that we're putting in that reduction in, in lanes and the, and that smaller roundabout to kind of reduce speed, to show that this is, you're moving more into an area with communities rather than, because the highway is right there, right? So it's to reduce that speed down. I, I'm, I do have one interesting question, and, you know, I noticed that eventually goes down, when you're going south, down to one lane in each direction right before the roundabout. I'm curious about the one lane one way and two lanes the other way. Wondering, was there ever a consideration about just doing one way, one lane each direction out of the gecko, rather than doing two lanes and down to one, heading south?
The, the, the two lanes, what I didn't talk about is what happens north of the Woodland Trail. So there've been some, I didn't want to take too much time, but there's some, there'll be some striping changes to change how that intersection works on, so just, I'm going to get to your question in a second. So the, the north lane will, going north, you'll now have two left-hand turning lanes onto Pacific. So that is intended to reduce the queuing that happens in, in the, in the, the middle lane there. And I think the really important thing, to get to your question, is right now that first extreme west lane terminates at Ross, what's going to happen is that's going to continue down all the way to Home Depot. And I think based on traffic analysis, that's where the need would, would happen. So what you don't see is in that transition from Woodland Trail, or really, I guess it begins in front of Home Depot, you, you lose that third lane. So, see, the third lane gets you to all of the businesses, it gets to Georgia Pacific, Platte Electric, gets that heavy traffic toward, you know, customer traffic into Home Depot, and then you transition down in, really across the Home Depot frontage to the two lanes to neck you down to be able to safely use the roundabout. So without really having a conversation with my, my design team, I think it was all based on perceived usage of what was going on on the, on the, yeah, east and, yeah, east and west sides of the road.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm looking forward to moving this forward. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, well, just gratitude to you, thank you. Most of my questions are going to be around community engagement, and I see that you, you have a plan, which I'm, I'm happy to see that. One suggestion I might have is, is in addition to the website, the email, is that we put a face behind all of that, and that we continue that engagement with people. I think it's, construction can be frustrating to deal with, especially if it's in your neighborhood, right? And I think it would be really, really important for us to make sure we're maintaining relationships in person with real people throughout the project, because I think it's, it's important to sort of build that relations, and maybe we'll calm some of the frustration around some of the construction as well. And I know you said that you will have ongoing meetings as well, so I, I know that that's part of that, but I can't stress that enough, how important it is. And I also want to lift up, yes, addressing speeding through design is what is probably the most brilliant aspect of this entire project. An elevated intersection is, is something that I can certainly see causing people to slow down, and this is an issue we keep hearing more and more about across our city. And so really interested in seeing how this all works out, what we learn from it, and how we'll apply those lessons, learn to other areas of our community. So, great work.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I have four motions, like to spend about seventeen million dollars and then hope that we reduce the city's obligation in the last motion. Is that enough for the vote? No, I'm sorry. Okay. Move the, I move to award the construction contract for the Phones Road Improvement Project to Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of thirteen million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing a supplement to the existing consultant services agreement with KPGPSOMAS Incorporated in the amount of two million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing a Schedule 74 Underground and Construction Project Agreement with Puget Sound Energy that obligates the city to eight hundred and twenty-five, eight hu, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I should just clarify that that's what say of shared costs at the very end of that motion, so I'm not sure that it's particular enough.
Yes. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to obligate additional grant funds from the Federal Highway Administration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Awesome. Jim added on those additional words, so I just wanted to take the vote again. All right, so that concludes our business items for this evening, so we will move on to item eight A on the agenda, which is the consideration of a referral regarding the study of reparations for the descendants of enslaved African people. This is a resolution that was brought forward by myself, and joining me in sponsoring this referral, which will ultimately be a resolution, is Mayor Protem Nguyen and Councilmember Vanderpool. So given the, the hour, and the fact that I'm afraid that my words might fail me, I'm going to try to be as brief as I can on this. But I do just want to lift up the significance and the importance of this resolution, which is, long story short, many of us are probably familiar with the, the story of freed African enslaved people being promised forty acres and a mule. That never happened from the United States government, and what that has resulted in is, is the lack of intergenerational wealth collectively for Black Americans in the United States. And what we see today is, is we know that the owners of these enslaved people did receive reparations, if you will, for loss of property when their enslaved persons were freed. You can actually trace some of the descendants of those slave owners to people who are alive today and benefiting from the intergenerational wealth that they have inherited as a result of, of their ancestors' participation in the ownership of enslaved people. So the United States government has a debt to pay, and I believe that it is incumbent upon the municipalities and state governments to urge our federal government to do what was promised. And so I am calling on us to draft a resolution that calls on our state legislature, the governor, Congress, and the office of the president to create a task force or commission to study the reparations for the descendants of enslaved African people specifically. And there's, and there's been some work that has been done to try to repair some of the harm, but it doesn't get at directly what reparations are, which I will just say, most often is referred to by direct cash payments. But in addition to that, it also could be housing, which we know that owning land, owning a home, is one of the fastest ways to accumulate wealth in this country. And so given the work that we've done around our affordable home ownership study, and all of the work that we are doing with a myriad of initiatives under Olympia Strong, and work that we're, we're doing to improve home ownership opportunities for Black community members and also other community members of color, I think it's perfectly in line with the work the city is already doing in this regard, and we can certainly find a way to incorporate the, the language of understanding what reparations are and how it relates to the work that we're doing as a city. And so you have a for you of resolution to, or excuse me, a referral to bring forward a resolution to the city council, which calls on a number of specific actions for us to take, in addition to calling on our state and federal governments, which I won't get into all of that right now, what it says you have in front of you. But I will just say that actually earlier today, the, the referral doesn't say it, but based on our conversations that we had in agenda setting, we've now had a conversation about bringing forward a study session for this, because it will touch upon several different areas of work in, in our cities, departments. And so all of the, I think it'd be important for all of the appropriate staff to come forward and get around the table and talk about how each of our initiatives of the work that, once again, we're already doing as a city is relevant and related to the work of reparations and repairing the harm for the descendants of enslaved African people. I do have additional stakeholdering that I would like to do with community members in regards to this, so there will be some additional time spent, even though you see a, a well-written draft before you tonight, we're not going to quickly bring that back for adoption. There's some more work to do in terms of engaging other nonprofit organizations. organizations, uh, other elected officials, community members, uh, and things of that nature. So, and once that's all completed, um, and we will bring the resolution back, uh, for consideration. And happy to have, uh, the support of the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Vanderpool, um, and the encouragement from the rest of the council on, uh, bringing this forward, and it's a, a, a very proud, uh, an important move for us to be making. So, thank you for being willing to be part of it. Um, and so, with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Seeing none. So can I, okay. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Yeah, I don't have a question. Um, thank you. Uh, uh, you were, you were actually brief and somehow recapped history and talked about what we're going to do going forward possibly, so, um, good job. Uh, I just wanted to, to, uh, call out, um, well, one, I really, really enjoyed working on this, uh, with both of you. And, uh, as well in, in crafting the pieces, whether it's the, the referral or the draft resolution, um, really just trying to be, meaningful and, and smart in, in what we're asking for, and so I, I, I think it would be easy to just say, um, to pass something and call on higher level of governments to, um, to pull a study that has been sitting, sitting on a shelf or, um, for, uh, waiting to be studied for decades, right? And, and honestly, probably have it not go anywhere, right? Because it's been decades. Um, and, uh, it could have been studied, and just that, studied. Um, and so we're not even really talking about actions right yet, so, um, uh, but anyways, we did not want to do that, and so we wanted to have something meaningful and, and, uh, thinking about what the current capacity, uh, of city staff is right now, or of city council, and hey, what are some clever ways that if we can't get to, uh, write to, uh, sort of writing up, writing checks, um, what makes sense in, in what we're currently doing, and so, uh, we heard earlier about, weaving in Thurston Strong efforts, or sorry, not Thurston Strong, but Olympia Strong effort, so that's one of those tangible things here. Um, the, uh, I don't want to butcher it, but it's at the Black Home Owners Collective.
Black Home Initiative.
Black Home Initiative. Okay. You all lifted it to me at the, at the same time. Thanks for having my back. Um, so, uh, so anyway, um, I know we want to keep it brief, but, uh, I'm just, uh, yeah, I, I just, uh, feel proud that, um, there is, something that, something that's a little bit meatier, and so, um, as we do call on, uh, say, our state legislature, um, then we'll, then it's not just, hey, do this, we want you to do this, but it's, hey, look at what we're doing, um, and see how you can join efforts, and I always think that's really powerful, so, anyways, for what it's worth, and and thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you both for working on it and really, uh, really taking the time to be smart about it.
Thank you. Um, I do want to just add, though, that I did add the words, not just to study, uh, not a task force just to study for reparations, uh, but also to implement task force, implement the task force recommendations, uh, just to be clear.
Noted. To be clear, noted.
Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, to that point, you know, implementation, action is very important. Um, if we want state and federal government to take it seriously, we have to see what we can do locally, right? We have to be able to make the argument, despite significantly less resources than what state and federal government has, that we are willing to, to do the things that we can within our powers so that the, so that the laboratories of democracy are working, so that they know that, you know, the work on the local level is possible, that, to make it so that there's more of a stronger argument, and so I am, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this. I, I can't, I'm looking forward to the study session. I'm looking forward to see what we can get done.
Thanks, everybody. So, yeah. Can I get a thumbs up that we can move forward? All right. Thank you all so much. All right, so that takes us to council reports. Um, I'll just begin with the mayor's report. Just a, a few weeks ago, um, we had our, another, uh, Large City Advisory Committee meeting with the Association of Washington Cities, or AWC. Um, one thing I just kind of wanted to share with you all was there was a very interesting conversation around whether or not AWC should, um, get in the game of advocating for rent stabilization. That turned out to be a very interesting conversation, um, but I will say, by the end of it, there was a mix of opinions, which I happily shared mine verbally and in writing in the chat over the meeting, uh, because I just was frustrated with some of what I was hearing. But, um, please know that I advocated as much as I could for AWC to join us in, uh, advocating for more rent stabilization. We have constituents asking us, uh, to do, uh, what we can about stabilizing rents and the cost of living in our state. Um, and I think, uh, AWC certainly should, should be part of that conversation, but, um, based on the sort of ba- balanced dialogue we had, I imagine maybe they'll wait in the wings some more, but we'll see. So, there is also, uh, the Law and Justice Council, we had our, our meeting, just last month, actually, it was a few weeks ago, um, our bimonthly meeting. Uh, one thing I wanted to share is that, um, we will be discussing election safety and security in our next meeting, uh, because that's the, that's the last time we will meet before the election, and I shared my concerns around election safety and security, and so, uh, my understanding is, is that will be the agenda item for Law and Justice, uh, to, to, uh, have a discussion about, and also, uh, for us to talk about what is our coordinated strategy, um, for public safety for the county, um, during that time, so. I'm happy to report out, um, what we discuss, uh, when that time comes. And then, lastly, I just wanted to mention the tour, uh, with Representative Strickland and, uh, the Department of Enterprise Services, the port, uh, and lot on the estuary that, uh, City Manager Bernie and I, uh, were part of. Um, and we just did a tour of, um, just around, uh, the estuary, and, um, and went over to, um, the boardwalks and had a conversation in regards to, um, the, uh, improvements that will be made, particularly as it relates to the, the Fifth Avenue Bridge replacement, uh, and also our sea level rise planning and the need for replacement of our boardwalks. Um, and, uh, that was a very, um, good conversation. Lot shared, uh, some interesting facts about, uh, how significant it will significantly improve water quality by having an, an estuary. Uh, so that was, uh, very important for, for folks to, to hear and have, uh, dialogue around. And then, uh, lastly, we just, uh, shared that, uh, we'll be, uh, Jay and I will be, uh, going out to, uh, Washington DC once again to, uh, lobby our congressional members, uh, for supporting the project, um, in the future, so, um, we'll be in DC in a few weeks in September. And that's my report. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. I will start to my right with Councilmember Madron.
Well, and that's a really good segue to what I have to report. Today, um, uh, the city manager and I, um, uh, had a, a meeting around the issued interlocal agreement, um, the issued estuary interlocal agreement. It's the, hopefully, the last one-on-one meeting that there, uh, the, the consultant team along with DES is going through one more round of one-on-one meetings with all the parties involved to make sure that we're all, um, uh, in agreement with what is in the ILA. Uh, they're, they're doing some final tweaks, tying a bow on it, um, and, uh, really excited to have this coming forward. One thing, um, that is on our to-do list as a city is, um, reviewing, uh, the subsidiary agreement in terms of the design and construction of the new bridge, um, so that is on our to-do list. But, um, our next, uh, step with this is that the, the tribe is hosting, uh, luncheon with all the parties involved to, um, you know, just kind of celebrate the work that we've done and just reiterate how, how important this work is to the tribe, to all of, uh, to, to everybody who has been participating. Um, and then we can expect this ILA to come forward to us as a council on October first. Uh, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, I only have one item, so, um, this, we, last week is my first time going to a national night out. That was fantastic. It was good to see my, I, well, you had your chance. So, uh, yeah, I'll go ahead. So, uh, you know, uh, it was good to see, uh, different, um, communities of just being, every, every place we stopped at was a different type of community with, with different things going on, and it was very wonderful to hear from, um, members of the, the public about what issues were important to them, having, um, the subject matter experts of the police officers there, being able to see that community connection. It's, it's all very, um, wonderful, and I, you know, I really, I kind of wish more people knew about it. Like, and there's a lot of people do, but I wasn't aware of it till I got on, so, I mean, I'm going to have to keep telling people about it, but it is, and then maybe we can keep expanding it, because it's, it's, um, it's, it's absolutely wonderful to, to see that involvement, to see that connection between our public servants and the public, and being there, and, 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 you know, just kind of hearing what are the issues that people are concerned about, you know, their, their neighborhoods or community, and, and I just, I found it all just very wonderful, um, part of our community. Um, it really makes our community unique, and, um, I, I'm glad to have gone along. I'll keep going along as long as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Councilmember Madron.
I, I also attended National Night Out, and I just want to share that, uh, the first place that we, the first place that we stopped, was that community before? Okay. Um, the first place that we stopped, uh, had some, some games for us all to play, and I just want to note that the mayor is particularly good at potato sack races and is very competitive.
Oh, there's a video, right?
There's a photo.
I don't know if there's-
I, I, I got a photo.
Yeah. She's got a really good photo. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Many councilmembers on this dais participated in National Night Out, and for those that didn't this time, they participated last time, probably. Um, I also saw a photo of the mayor, um, launching himself. I don't know where he was trying to go. Must have been the finish line. And then, in the photo, I guess I shouldn't pick on our city manager too much, because he's not here to defend himself or be a witness, but he seemed to be going a different direction than everyone else in the photo. Um, and then I saw a photo of Councilmember Madron wearing pirate hats. Homemade pirate hats. So it was lots and lots of fun, and I got to be alongside Councilmember Gilman. Uh, and we were team two, um, and we also visited a lot of different neighborhoods, and it was just a really great time.
And we can't let Chief Allen, uh, off the hook here. He also participated in the potato sack races, so I'm going to be sending some photos to Rebecca, the police department, so we can all enjoy them.
Yeah. Everyone loves your report, Robert.
Well, yeah. Any additional questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Yeah. I just want to say thank you, Chief. Please, uh, express our gratitude to the department as well for, that was a great night, uh, spent out, and, uh, thank you for, uh, returning my cheap aviators. I don't buy expensive ones, because I leave them everywhere, but thank you for bringing them back. Councilmember Gilman.
So, one thing we noticed at the night out this year were fire department units who were able to stay for a pretty good period of time at these events. They weren't called away in two minutes. And that brings me to my TCOM Administrative Board report. Just one thing to tell you about that report, and that's that monthly call volume is down about twenty-five percent this year from last year, and specifically July 4th. Compared to previous July 4ths, it was down fifty percent. I think the difference of people not blowing their fingers off makes a difference in how many calls people have. So, um, you know, I, I just, I, I just really wanted to appreciate that we, we, um, formalized that, um, reimbursement system for the basic life transport, um, in, in our consent agenda to date. That's part of it. Having those two units move frees up the, the bigger rigs to stay longer in one place. And I think just the, the whole evolution of our responses is allowing us to have less people calling and having the fire truck or the police car need to respond pronto. So, that was, anyhow, that was, for me, the best part of the night out. It was the first time that I've had fire trucks at two of the events we went to. And I, I like them. Big, I like those trucks, right? Uh, related to the reparations referral, uh, Inter-City Transit last week adopted our Title VI program, which is something similar to the city's HUD Fair Housing sort of analysis. And I'm excited that, you know, we've talked about impacts of the county becoming larger, becoming a larger bin area, you know, our five-person commissions, all that. The transit benefit area also grew into a, a, a larger designation that requires a more rigorous Title VI evaluation, and that's prompted a couple of work sessions to talk about more ambitious public outreach and, um, new considerations for, are we equitably serving everybody in the community? So, that was a cool thing. And the last thing I'll say is from the, um, Coalition of Neighborhood Associations last night, we had a presentation about kind of a unique grant within the, the grants we did through this first round of Inspire Funding, and that is Friend of Tree, Friends of Trees, who are training people to be Neighborhood Tree Ambassadors. So it's an afternoon-long training. The first one is September 21st, Saturday, from one to four in the afternoon at Priest Point Park. No squawks in park. Old habits die hard. All right. Um, but the, the project is to allow neighbors to know what the resources are and to be able to talk to their neighbors about big trees and special trees in the neighborhood, and how they might be, uh, cared for, and, um, and, and about the values of those trees staying in the neighborhood. So, I thought that was kind of an exciting report.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Councilmember Gilman, can you say the date and time of that again?
Yes. The organization is called Friends of Trees, and the program is called Being a Tree Ambassador, and, uh, Saturday, September 21st, from one to four PM. And, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know. Other than that, I just had a paper flyer, so I don't know where there's an electronic place to go look for it.
No, that would be enough.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Well, I'm glad I didn't show up this Saturday. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I just wanted to flag, um, something that probably came across in all of our inboxes last week, but something I'm really, really excited about, and I know you all are too, which is Olympia Youth Social that's happening on, uh, Saturday, August 17th, for young people. Um, uh, but hopefully you can share it with, uh, the people that you come across and young people in your lives. Um, and so that's, uh, Saturday, August 17th, Percival Landing Park, from one to four PM. It is a time to, uh, enjoy live music activities. There's going to be a live art mural, so I think that's like a co-creation art project. There will be ice, free ice cream. Um, this is hosted by the, uh, not the Olympia, uh, Youth Council, because that will be seated in January, although it's the youth advisors for the council, so I just, I hope it's a really good turnout. Um, I'm going to kind of like hover. Uh, I'm really excited about it. Uh, this is, this is a big deal, and, um, yeah, and it was just, uh, completely planned by them, so hopefully it'll drum up some really good participation as well. Um, uh, the sort of whole purpose of this is to, uh, be social, but then also, um, get more applicants for the Olympia Youth Council, and the Olympia Youth Council, uh, applications are live. You can find it on our website. You can just search Youth Council, and it should come up for you on its project page. Um, and I forget when they're closing. I believe it closes sometime in September. I think it's September 11th.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that affirmative, Councilmember Vanderpoel? Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, the boss. Yeah. And then I did other things that are city council job-related, but this is definitely the most exciting. And also, Chief Allen, Rebecca from your department, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, such great coordination for the National Night Out and getting all of those pieces together. That's kind of like the one night that I get to be a little double-duty because I work in my day job at the Department of Corrections and OPD partners with the Department of Corrections as well as TCOM and others. And there are so many moving pieces and Rebecca is just stellar. I also, in our, Clark and I, or sorry, Councilmember Gilman, nice team two, we had Margot as a part of it. And she got so many different questions and she just knows her stuff. It's like you just pull a string behind her back and she just starts going and lists out all of the different services that the police department has that a lot of people don't realize. So, very cool. I had a lot of, a lot of fun out with your staff. And truthfully, the years that I sign up, I get excited about signing up and then it starts like getting closer and I'm like, oh no, that's like four extra hours that night. Why did I sign up? And then by the end of the night, I'm surprised by how much fun I had again and how quickly it went. So it's really a blast and I love that we participate.
Well said. Any questions or comments for Mayor Protem Wen? Councilmember Vanderpoel?
So I may, I would consider myself a older, or you, sorry, younger millennial. Do I make the cut to show up on Saturday?
You can show up to drop someone off. No, it's not an ageist thing. It's just, we are hoping to get youth council participation. You must be under 21. So you can be 21, but you must be under.
Councilmember Parsley?
Oh, that was good. I only have one thing to cover. We had a, even though we're supposed to be meeting quarterly, we had a Thurston Climate Collaborative Committee, Steering Committee meeting. I'm still struggling with that new name. We covered primarily, we got, well, one, I just want to say, we should, as a council, consider having a work session to bring in our regional partners to tell us what they're doing about climate change. We had a phenomenal one from Lot. We had Inner City Transit. We actually had a really good one from Puget Sound Energy and their partnerships with cities. It was, it was, it's been very uplifting. We're gonna be doing a couple more in the next couple meetings, which is just bringing in people and jurisdictional partners that are doing work that we're not aware of and that is furthering our climate mitigation plan. And Inner City Transit came in and did a, rocked out a really good climate, what they're working on, especially with their new buses and their new facilities and their plans for going forward and their pilot studies with hydrogen. And it was just excellent. The work of the committee had to do with our budget. We're about to, for the next two years, '25, '26, we're gonna be spending just a little over $87,000 each year for each jurisdictions. The 2025, sort of 20, part of 2024 regional initiative is a gap analysis on how we are addressing our transportation greenhouse footprint and what can we do for jurisdictions that we are not currently doing. And then we also voted on the greenhouse gas assessment because it was some pressure from the community members that we continue to do this every year, whereas Ickley recommends it's every three years. The state passed a law that has the Commerce now doing some of that. And what they discovered when the staff went and compared that, there's some discrepancies, partly because Ickley doesn't take into account tree coverage and the Commerce Department does. So their recommendation was to stay at every three years, especially since the county is doing it and there's only one county climate staff member. And it took 10 months for her to do this in about 10% of her time during that 10 months. And since Ickley is like, we should really be doing this every three years and we have these new laws coming down from Commerce, we should really, you know, one, go to three years and adapt as the Commerce Plan becomes more clear on how we're gonna have to align that. We got an introduction to our new website, which is looking fantastic. It's a vast improvement from TRPCs. And they got a logo, which is, actually, they're really cool logos. And you should go look at it. And then we got our jurisdictional updates. And I'm always, it's nice to sit through those because you can see what the other jurisdictions are doing. And for example, Tom Water with their EV charging stations that are entirely solar and some of the partnerships Lacy's doing with PSE and energy efficiency. So it's kind of uplifting when people in our community say we're not doing enough. That section of our regional meeting is uplifting to see how much the staff effort is pushing us forward.
Questions for Councilmember Parsley? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Councilwoman Parsley, can you remind me when we should expect to see a model ordinance for home energy usage at time of sale, that assessment that we've been?
They, they are working through legal and they should be bringing it back either in December or January 1st. They really want to get it going, but they have to have four jurisdictions in legal, but they're very, very close.
Great, because I'm tired, tired of waiting, so.
Me too, me too. And so are they.
Thank you very much.
It's, it's a left. You've been on Regional Housing Council and when you got an ordinance that has to match across all four jurisdictions, it's gonna take a bit of legal work.
Yes, it makes you wonder what you could have done if you had just gone first.
Any additional questions or comments for Councilmember Parsley? I have a question about going with the Ickley every three years. The justification for that, is that to give it enough time to see, to have a significant-
Yeah, and it smoothes out changes that can be temporary. For example, like pandemic was very temporary when we went back to norm. And so it smoothes out those changes and also reality is it doesn't change that quickly.
Okay.
And we're still working out what we need to actually measure. Like, the tree cover is not covered by Ickley. We also don't have in our wedge analysis, nor do we know how to do it. The science isn't there. The impact of bringing in goods from other states, other jurisdictions, all that other stuff is still being worked out. So there's still some science on that. And it just, it's not just about the staff work, it's Ickley's true recommendation. And then we've got to align the new state regulations with our Ickley requirements. And it's free with our membership, Ickley. So a lot of the work is done. While it was 10% for the single staff member at the county, if Ickley wasn't part of it, it would have been probably about 35 to 50% of her time for the 10 months.
Yeah. And I agree with your point about getting some sort of regional update on where we're at with our emission reductions because we, we know where we're at. But it'd be nice to know regionally where we're, what's going on. So, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. A couple of things. So first of all, I'm just sitting over here beaming tonight. What a great meeting. And I'm just proud to work with all of you and our great staff and council. So thank you for being you. Also wanted to make a comment on the mayor's report about the Association of Washington Cities, just because I continue to have a hope and a dream that we'll have a progressive city association of some kind in the state that, where cities that have aligned values get together to get stuff done in the legislature and not have to fight about common sense and weird positions that people bring to the table. So thank you for holding up that fight for us at the AWC. And as you find mayors who, their cities are more in alignment of the way we do things in Olympia, let's bring them together here and let's talk about what it would look like to have a joint legislative agenda that's more meaningful. And I'd love to be a part of something like that. And then my last item is the Law Enforcement and Firefighter Disability Board met last night. It was a historic meeting because we went an hour and 10 minutes. Typically, our meetings are about 15 minutes long. And I believe our record is right around an hour. So we had no cases. Typically, we're meeting to fund cases around medical needs for our obligations. We met with an organization called Concierge Care. And so this came about because we sent two members to the Law Enforcement and Firefighter Disability Conference in Eastern Washington this year. And they sat in on this workshop from Concierge Care, which in a nutshell, their mission is to keep our elders in their homes safely for as long as possible. And what that means is that they do that, but then when it's time for somebody to move into a new situation, adult family home or some other level of care, then they help with the family getting to, you know, do the tours and pick the site and negotiate the pricing and all of these things, and they do it all for free. And so they said that, it was really interesting because we were talking to them about our 75 members and like they're aging and getting to the point where our staff can't also be their advocate, right? Like, so our HR staff are having to advocate with families to help them get through, you know, really hard decisions. And so this organization is able to do it for free and they do it with the marketing dollars from the adult family home industry. So think about hotelier contracting and different kinds of industries where services are kind of free for you, but that it's being paid for by the industry. And so it's actually state law. The, or the adult family home providers are not allowed to walk into the hospital and sales pitch people when they need a new place. And, and the Concierge Care organization can. And they told us many stories about how they get a call, you know, somebody's gonna get put out, out of the hospital without a place to go, without a roof over their head and being able to get them in a situation within a couple of hours before they're discharged to the hospital. Lots of other services, a lot more to talk about. We're gonna be looking to implement their services within the LEFT Disability Board, but also we recommended to them that, to the HR staff, because the Concierge Care folks told us that firefighters and police are carrying the cards for these folks in their, in their rigs on calls because they're responding to people in desperate need with dementia or whatever and they're at home and they're not in a routine and they're not being taken care of like they should be. Their families are at wits' end. And that, just that card and making that connection could get that somebody, that family into, into a better place. So HR is gonna be calling both of our chiefs to let them know that we have hopefully a new opportunity for them. As well, we recommended that this, this brochure for this organization become part of our retirement packet for city employees when they retire out because you just never know when you're gonna need a service like that. And, and kind of getting some, some thinking around later in your life at your point of retirement would be really helpful for people, whether they're, you know, retiring from any branch of service or, or coming out of fire and police or having served as veteran. There's a lot of different benefits available out there that people just don't know about. And this organization is just concierge to help you. So it was, it was impressive and I realized I'm going on, but I'm really happy to see a resource like that come to our 75 members and hopefully the broader city.
That's great. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Gilman?
So I, I appreciate your frustration about getting the Association of Washington Cities to advocate for rent stabilization. And I, I had a little rant similar to what you just said when I was with a group of elected in Seattle a few weeks ago. And somebody turned around to me and said, so I served on the legislative subcommittee and they were one vote away from making that part of the plank, and where were you? So if there's any volunteers who want to get engaged in the Association of Washington Cities, at least it's, it's closely divided about whether or not to pursue these sorts of protections for the majority.
Actually, before we go to the Assistant City Manager, Mayor Protem, I believe you had something?
Yeah. So next week, we're having a special meeting in place of our regularly scheduled council meeting. But just a heads up for council members that weren't a part of agenda setting this afternoon, the mayor had asked that we all be sent updates to whenever, whenever council members can attend any portion of the Kato delegation visit so that we all know. And hopefully we can try to get as many council members there at, you know, each of the different events over, I think, the two or three-day period time as possible. So I know it's a pretty quick turnaround from next week, but just so you can kind of have your eyes out if you have any extra time to spend with the delegation.
Thank you. Yeah, that was, that's a great segue to what I was gonna mention. I was gonna mention that, but next week, actually for the next several weeks, we don't have a regularly scheduled business meeting. I believe we return September 10th is our next regular business meeting. Next week, we will be meeting to welcome and have a reception for Mayor Iwane of Kato, Japan, which is our sister city. So excited to welcome them back. And yes, as the Mayor Protem said, I've asked that we all can see which members are going to which event so that we can know if, whether or not there's a presence at different parts of the itinerary. So again, returning to chambers for a regular business meeting September 10th. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. I just, I just have one thing to report, and that is I would like to introduce and welcome our new deputy city attorney, Jake Stillwell, who joined us in June. And he has been enjoying his first city council meeting tonight. And so that's all I have to report.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Welcome, Jake. And what a way to just get thrown right in for your first meeting. This was a very, but this was a good one, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yes, and Jay's dog, too. All right. Well, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.